Good morning, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, today being September 2nd, 2020, hour being 10:00 AM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll for purposes of the call.
Chairman Rob Pitt.
Present.
Commissioner Liz Howman.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Ellis.
Present.
Commissioner Lee Morris.
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Hall. Vice Chairman Marvin Arrington Jr. Commissioner Joe Khan.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Please rise wherever you are for the invocation.
Sorry, President, I couldn't unmute in time, I'm sorry. This Commissioner Hall.
Thank you.
Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious God, we are grateful for this day, for your continued grace and mercy upon our lives. We pray now your peace and your power upon this community and this nation. Give our leaders your guidance and wisdom. It is in your name we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one mission with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I told you it's gonna miss the blessing.
Hey, I heard.
Madam Clerk.
On page two, Consent Agenda. Two zero dash zero five eight five, Adoption of the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the county commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any Consent Agenda item is desired, that will be moved to the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have some items to be removed from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration. Items to be removed by Commissioner Morris on page two. Two zero dash zero five eight seven, Superior Court Administration requests approval to process outstanding and current invoices via purchase order for medical waste pickup and removal services. Page two, two zero dash zero.
Who wants that one removed?
Commissioner Morris. Two zero dash zero five eight eight, Superior Court Administration requests approval to process outstanding and current invoices for medically assisted treatment services. Also on page two, two zero dash zero five eight nine, Superior Court Administration requests approval to process outstanding and current invoices for drug testing, scheduling, and client monitoring.
Commissioner Morris.
Commissioner Morris. And also for Commissioner Morris on page three. Two zero dash zero five nine zero, Juvenile Court requests approval of the lowest responsible bidder to perform surveillance officer community supervision services. Those are all removed by Commissioner Morris for separate consideration. Commissioner Hall would like, on page five. Two zero dash zero five nine nine, Real Estate and Asset Management requests approval of a resolution for the purpose of operating a low-level windshield alert warning system outside at the Camp Truitt campus. On page six, two zero dash zero six zero zero, Community Development requests approval to terminate a contract between Fulton County and the City of Fairburn regarding 2018 CDVG funds. Also on page six, two zero dash zero six zero one, Community Development requests approval to rescind the award of CDVG funds to the City of College Park. And that's all I have for today.
All right, any other items on the Consent Agenda to reboot for further discussion or any other issues?
Move approval as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
I properly moved a second, and Madam Clerk, let's vote, please.
The vote is open.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Arrington.
Yes.
Commissioner Khan.
Yes.
All right, I vote yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have an item that needs to be added to today's regular meeting agenda. Bottom of the add-on memo on page three. Two zero dash zero six two seven, Registration Election requests approval of a grant award for election processing and voting equipment.
All right, that will require a supermajority of five yeas. I'm assuming that this is time-sensitive, so entertain the motion to.
Motion.
All right, I'll second, let's vote, please. Commissioner Howman. Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington. Commissioner Khan.
I'll vote yes.
And I vote yes, that's fine.
That's fine.
Thank you. Continue, Madam Clerk.
The motion passes. On page six. Regular meeting agenda, two zero dash zero six zero two, Adoption of the Regular Meeting Agenda. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have one amendment to today's regular meeting agenda. To move up item two zero dash zero six two two on page eleven. Fanced by Chairman Pitts, request approval of resolution in support of a continuing transition of the Fulton County Board of Health and for other purposes.
Any other items on the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the agenda with the addition of the item we just voted to add and with the change that the board just said.
All right, I'll second, let's vote, please. Commissioner Howman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington. Commissioner Khan.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
The motion passes, six J, zero N. Two zero dash zero six zero three, Ratification of Minutes. Regular meeting minutes, August 5th, 2020. Reset meeting posted in the minutes, August 19th, 2020.
So motion? All right, I'll vote.
Motion.
All right, properly moved and seconded. Let's vote, please. Commissioner Howman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington. Commissioner Khan.
Yes.
I vote yes.
The motion passes, six J, zero N. Zero dash zero six zero four, Presentation of Proclamations and Certificates. We do not have any today. On page seven, Public Hearing, two zero dash zero six zero five, Public Comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment, register online on the website, county's website at www.fultoncountygeorgia.com. Speakers will be granted after two minutes each. The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed thirty minutes.
All right, any public speakers?
We have three emailed speakers.
Okay.
The first of these is Geraldine Bryson from College Park. I sent comments today, September 2nd, 2020, as the founder of Victims of the System. My 501(c)(3) is the voice of the least of these found in jails and prisons in Georgia. A group that the majority of citizens and elected officials could give a damn about. Why don't you care? Because ninety-nine percent are poor, seen as having no value as productive citizens, and are black and brown citizens, mostly black men. These inmates have gotten themselves caught in a system designed to entrap ninety-nine percent of them, entrap them ninety-nine percent of the time, found themselves without a support system at home or in school while growing up, and without resources to get them out of the system, then traps them, that later leads to exploitation. As a resident and taxpayer of Fulton County, my focus is the major exploiter, the Fulton County Sheriff's Office who runs the Fulton County Jail. Secures phone system owned by a multimillionaire Detroit Piston Zone of Tom Gores is making millions at the expense of inmates and their families, ninety-nine point nine percent of whom are poor, charging extremely high per-minute phone fees to talk to loved ones. I ask, what does the jail do with this money? I ask, why are the fruits and vegetables not served to inmates daily? Why do family members and inmates have to buy through a vendor chicken, tuna, antibacterial soap, toothpaste, et cetera? Why is dental floss not an item for purchase that is necessary for good health? Why aren't books provided by the public library instead of being purchased by family and friends? Why is there not Oversight Committee of the Sheriff's Office in the jail? Commissioners, think about how you have failed the least of these in Fulton County jails. As citizens, this is your call to action.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Donna Renfro Lawson from Atlanta. Good morning to the elected, selected, and rejected. County Attorney PP Hooker has been pinpointed as solely responsible for my Donna Renfro Lawson's expulsion from Fulton County Library System as verbalized by Gail Hunter Holloman, Executive Director. When the question was posed to the Library Board of Trustees on Wednesday, August 26th during the public meeting, is my belief that CAPP Hooker has acted as judge and jury against my rights, including the ability to vote at the public library facilities, and behaves as a tyrannical employee who bypassed the commissioners appointed and supposedly stipend-paid Library Board of Trustees input, and furthermore used an outdated policy to impose punitive actions against me regarding my accessing public library buildings and services offered without my knowledge or an opportunity to question her purpose or reasoning. What say you, Commissioner Howman, about CAPP Hooker's business manners? Did she reprimand your employee Denise Frazier, who questioned the LBOT during a meeting that I noted as a violation of order? Or was it a privileged move? How about you, Bob Ellis? Did you know that the public libraries in Fulton County and your district are open to residents from other districts also? Mr. Morris, it's hard to believe. I'm sorry. It's hard to believe that you are not aware of my issues with the public library. You had access to COS Harriet Thomas before Mr. Pitts returned to office. I've spoken to your staff, they have failed to inform you. As Commissioner Hall, my ability to not vote in a library because of the county attorney should really concern you for transparent reasons. Commissioner Khan, J.C. Sebastian, your current and latest COS has not provided a response to an inquiry to your former COS, from your former COS, as anticipated regarding my inability to enter the libraries. Commissioner Arrington, how about many other constituents who have been expelled from library services from your district? And why? Commissioner Rob Pitts, you were told that CAPP Hooker expressed concerns through poor communication skills. Why is she doing work for the library when that group has an assigned attorney who answers to the name of Adabola?
All right, fifteen seconds.
Is this the employee being micromanaged? In addition, there are a number of entry points of out-of-balance situations with the Class Pass Project operating in conjunction with Atlanta Public Schools, segregating discrimination, and injustices are evident.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Last speaker is Ben Harsh of Atlanta. Please invite the Atlanta Postmaster to talk about processing absentee ballots. Please pass an order stating that car caravans from out of the county will require a parade permit. Please allow the telephone callers from the senior facilities to add conversation about the status of senior absentee ballot requests. Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Nobody raised their hand.
Okay, no further speakers.
All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
Continuing on page seven, Presentations to the Board. Two zero dash zero six zero six, MARTA Quarterly Briefing.
Mr. Parker, this morning, actually with us.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I'm here. Can you hear me all right, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I want to thank you, Chairman Pitts, for giving me the opportunity to present to you and to members of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. I'd also like to thank the Fulton County Board members who are on here virtually. Chairman Frida Hartage and Board members Lucha Ivy and Alpon, thank you for all of your support. We're going to go over a lot of information today, good information, and I hope that the takeaway that we have from my presentation is that while the COVID-19 is clearly profoundly affecting both MARTA, the county, and the citizens that we serve, I want to assure you that we continue to advance a lot of important initiatives here at MARTA, and I'm excited to share them with you. Next slide, please. We have four items that we'll cover today, and I will hop right into the next slide. MARTA Rider Initiatives. We have several items that, next slide, please. And you can advance it one more slide. We have several initiatives that I want to talk about, but this is one that I want to bring some significant update on. We have entered into a partnership with Hope Atlanta. We started this partnership to focus on the unsheltered that are in and around our MARTA system and are in the communities that we serve. We recognize that being unsheltered is not a crime and that we wanted to make sure that we have this initiative to deal with those individuals who are using MARTA for shelter. The partnership with Hope Atlanta is intended to be a beginning. It's currently a year-long program. It'll be based out of our Five Points Station. We have two caseworkers who will be working with field protective specialists. These are not police officers, but these are MARTA employees who will go throughout the system, our rail system, our bus network, and other property that we own. And just simply trying to find hotspots where we have homeless and unsheltered individuals, and making sure that we are doing our best to connect them with the services that our jurisdictions are able to provide them. This is a brand-new program, but we've already seen some fruits from this. Just in the first two weeks, we've connected with two individuals who are unsheltered and connected them with some housing. So we're excited to advance this, and I will bring you more information about this as it advances. The next slide that we're on right now, we have stood up our MARTA Rider Advisory Council. I believe the last time I was here, we were just about to roll it out. We did have eighty applicants for this twenty-four-member board. Several of them are representing Fulton County. These four individuals that you see reside in Fulton County. We do have twenty-four members who'll be focusing on a broad range of individuals. We actually have a meeting tonight with this group, and we'll be making sure that they understand some background about MARTA, starting with the MARTA financing and understanding our budget. But really, at its core, what we're trying to do is make sure the voice of our customers are heard stronger by our management team. We're trying to focus on issues like how we're advancing our elevator and escalator improvement program, our audiovisual information system that announces train and bus arrival information. And we'll also engage this group as we finalize the design of the new railcars and make sure that we're getting the voice of our customers as we advance that design. So we're excited about this. Next slide, please. Back in June, we looked around our system, wanted to evaluate where we were with masks, mask usage, and it was alarmingly low. I'm going to avoid getting into all the politics that we're all well aware of that go into mask usage, but MARTA stood up and recognized we needed to take some definitive actions to make sure that this public health issue is being dealt with as people are coming back to our system and feel comfortable and confident that they can safely ride MARTA. We began the process of committing to distribute about two million masks so far. We've handed out just over four hundred thousand masks. We've asked our administrative personnel to help with this effort. Our operations and police departments are also doing this, and we've made this a requirement of our Rider With Respect campaign and really have seen almost no conflict with our riders and have gone from a low of thirty-five percent mask usage in June to just about everybody, about ninety percent of our customers wearing masks. And when we approach people and offer them a mask, we, you know, we're approaching a hundred percent. So we're really excited about the transformation that's happened with mask usage on our system, and excited about that. Next slide. I'd like to recognize some work that really is one of the communities within Fulton County's work, and we're just excited to be part of this. Sandy Springs was awarded a Smart Community Grant focused on improving pedestrian and intersection improvements. And they will be focusing on making sure that there's better pedestrian, safer streets around our transit stops. We're committed to work with them, and we see this as a great opportunity to focus on some signal prioritization, and we thank Sandy Springs for their leadership on this effort and look forward to working with them. Next slide. I want to commend you personally, Chairman Pitts, for your leadership on this issue and others on the commission. You've done a great job with the State Farm Arena Early Voting. I was very appreciative of being asked to participate in the press conference that you had, and I just want to thank you for engaging us. One thing that we did that I'd like to point out is we committed to making sure that the station was open for the early voting, and we went under a pretty significant effort to make sure that that station shined and was cleaned. And this is just a great picture of some of our staff who were cleaning and making sure that the station looked cleaner than it ever looked before. So congratulations in a successful early voting effort to the county. Next slide. Our State of Good Repair, want to provide an update on this. Next slide, please. As we've talked about before, we're advancing a significant, about a seven-year program to upgrade all of our elevators and escalators throughout the system. Some of these escalators and elevators are approaching forty years old. These are very, very heavy-duty escalators, much more heavy-duty than we would see in an office building. We're well underway with this contract. It's over a $200 million contract. We, to date, we're at about forty percent of the escalators are overhauled, about twenty percent of the, excuse me, forty percent of the elevators have been overhauled, and about twenty percent of the escalators. We continue to advance this. We recognize and we know that vertical transportation is a critical element of the services that we provide. And we'll continue on this project. Like I said, we've got about seven more years of this effort. But I think, next slide, please. Some of the things that we've done to mitigate this is focusing on making sure that we have better information to our commuters so that either a planned outage for an escalator that's being overhauled or when an elevator fails and has to be taken out of service because some mechanical failure. We've done a lot to improve the information with a current update for elevators and escalators on our website. It's available and updated throughout the day. And just recently, we are in the midst of installing at the elevators, some actual flip signs that one would see when you approach an elevator that's working. You'll see this "Thank you for riding MARTA, have a wonderful day" sign. But if an elevator, either planned or unplanned, is taken out of service, we'll put the sign down, and there'll be some specific directions on how an individual who is there at the elevator and is trying to figure out what to do next has directions on the workaround that they can do. It may be calling someone, it may be simply using another elevator that's in the station, using another station entrance. But we have now customized information at each of the elevators to help our patrons navigate the system. So customers can plan their trip accordingly, see what's in service, what's not. And in the case they get to an elevator that's out of service, they'll have good information about what they should do if they can't access that elevator. Next slide, please. As I shared in the past, one of the things that we did during the spread of COVID-19, we took steps to protect our employees, protect our customers by closing many of our restrooms. And we only opened the end-of-line station restrooms and restrooms at Five Points and Lindbergh. We've just recently made a decision to reopen the restroom, so we have now reopened our restrooms to the seventeen restrooms that we have station agents at, so we're back to where we were pre-COVID-19. And to provide an update on what we're doing to make our restrooms more accessible to our patrons. East Point Station, we're beginning to convert that restroom to what we call a smart restroom, which makes it easier for customers to access and keep the restroom in service. So this is a system that we have at a couple stations that we'll be rolling out to a lot more stations. And East Point is the first one on the list. So we're excited to provide this amendment to our patrons. Next slide, please. The Bus Shelters and Amendment Program, we have been advancing this, providing you a lot of good information about before-and-after pictures and information about where we stand. We've made a commitment to that in 2020 calendar year, that sixty-three bus stop amendments will be completed, constructed in Fulton County. We're well underway with that. We've got twenty-eight done, installed to date. You can see the map that shows where they're installed. Four currently under construction, some in the permitting process and some in design. We do have some minor impacts with COVID-19. Seven of the sites that we have identified prior to COVID-19 are bus stops that are currently closed because of our essential transit service that we're running. So we're currently seeking out replacement sites so that we can meet this commitment of the sixty-three bus shelter amenities in 2020. And we will continue this effort and get to the commitment that we've made to all the jurisdictions in installing the thousand amendments over a five-year period. So this continues well. Next slide. I've mentioned this briefly in the past with not a lot of details. I want to share some of the details because this will be a significant impact to our patrons in February of 2021. Part of our State of Good Repair program, we're making a major investment in our track infrastructure. North of Lindbergh Station, we do have two, excuse me, three major, what we call interlockings, places where trains, you know, where the trains either go to Doraville or North Springs and some other double crossovers that are critical to our operation. We have to replace these crossovers. These are worn, we have some, trying to avoid slow orders in the area. So we will be undertaking a five-day rail shutdown between Lindbergh and Lennox Station, as well as between Lindbergh and Buckhead Station in order for us to replace these, cross these diamond crossovers and turnouts. Next slide, please. We will be undergoing a significant, large-scale marketing and communications effort this fall to inform the public around this shutdown and why it is necessary for our safe operation. We'll be using digital formats, radio announcements, station signage, and we'll also be communicating with the municipalities and city governments to communicate these events. We will have commuter buses will be used during the shutdown and rerouted to stay away from the areas that are affected by the shutdown. The shutdowns will happen beginning at 10:00 PM on a Tuesday evening and continue all the way through the weekend and so that Monday morning service at 4:00 AM can resume normal. We recognize this will be a significant impact and interruption to our service. We'll have, as I said, we'll have buses staged. We will have trains in place north and south of the affected areas so that we can make sure we minimize the impact to customers. And more to come on this as we roll out this initiative and make sure our customers are well aware of this important maintenance activity that has to be done. Next slide, please. Want to talk about advancing the more MARTA capital Want to talk about advancing the more MARTA capital program. This is important, you can, you can stay right there. This is an important piece of information. We've made some significant commitments when Fulton County and the other jurisdictions as well, excuse me, MARTA Board of Directors approved our 15th Amendment. I want to assure you that we're on track with these initiatives, and I'd like to bring you up-to-date on a few of them. We're really beginning to advance the South Fulton Parkway that was identified in the Fulton County Transit Master Plan. We, we have a, a meeting that, that was scheduled for September 4th, but, but we are in the process of rescheduling that, so this, nope, this information is right. I guess the slide was changed, appreciate that. So we'll, we'll be having an upcoming meeting with the South Fulton mayors to make sure that we're answering questions about the process and what we will be doing over the next 12 months to advance this, this important program, the South Fulton BRT. And we have a significant public engagement effort that will begin in November of 2020, and we want to make sure that the South Fulton mayors are well aware of this. We're working very, very closely with Dick and his staff on this issue, and, and we'll be doing a joint presentation, so looking forward to, to advancing this. Next slide, please, is the Georgia 400 update. As I think most people know, this is the 12-mile corridor from North Springs up to Windward Park and Ride with five potential stops. As GDOT is advancing their managed lane program, we are now beginning to focus on the development of the station areas to support the, the GDOT's RFP release in the Phase II final design. We've got a very conceptual design completed, beginning stakeholder engagement around that, that conceptual design of these stations, and we will hope to, or planning on having the 30% design for RFP Draft Two released in the fall of 2020. So looking forward to continuing working on that. And we have, you know, plan on having the full support documents for the final RFP done by 2021. Yeah, I will just mention as a side, and I think we're all well aware of this, that for both of these projects, we do have a funding gap, but we have a clear commitment within the 15th Amendment to advance the conceptual design of these efforts as we're trying to work through collaboratively with dealing with the, the funding shortfalls to both of these projects. So we will continue to advance both of these projects and excited about that. Next slide, want to give you a brief update on our TOD development program. Next slide. This is just giving you a little bit update of where many of our TOD efforts are on our Going to give you a little bit of information of some of the efforts that are going on, but I think one important point is, is we are significantly using our TOD program to leverage affordable housing throughout the jurisdictions that we serve. So you can see on this slide between ones that we have built under construction, ones that we are negotiating and planning. We have either completed or in the works at some level over 1,300 affordable housing units throughout the jurisdictions that we serve. So really, we're really excited about not only our TOD program, but how it is helping to focus on and alleviate the real affordable housing problems that we have in the region. Next slide, please. Just a quick update on, on two initiatives that we have underway. We have received a term sheet to amend the ground lease that we have at, at Abernathy 400, and we're, we're working with that. This will lead to potentially, you know, significant number to annuity multifamily units with, clearly with affordable housing units, so we will keep you up to date as we analyze that, that term sheet and try and get a, a deal with this developer. And then we're also working with the City of College Park around the efforts to find the Flint River and reopen that important waterway and, and, you know, much of the covered river is on property that, that MARTA owns, so we're, we're committed to and working collaboratively with the City of College Park to advance that effort. So that concludes my remarks. Next slide, and just want to, Chairman Pitts, turn it back to you, and thank you for your attention and the attention of your fellow commissioners, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Parker. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Parker?
I've got a few.
Mr. Carron?
I do too.
Commissioner Hall? Christian, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Great presentation. Glad to see you guys back up in Adam here. I'm glad you guys got with the mask program. In terms of the buses in general, are all the routes back up to normal schedules, or are we still on partial routes or what?
Yeah, we, we are still running what we call our essential service plan, which back on April 20th, started with 41 routes. We have since added 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 routes back to our system. We, eight of, and of those eight routes, four of them do serve Fulton County, the 55, the 181, the 87, and the 12. We, we continue to try and monitor where we have excess capacity. Just, just to remind everyone, what we've had to do is to ensure we have safe operation. We want to, we know that we need to encourage social distancing on our buses, so we've blocked every other seat on our buses, which means that each bus now carries half the capacity, so we've doubled up service on the buses. That, that we're running these 41 routes, we've been able to add eight back. We continue to monitor this, this very difficult situation, but we are committed to having safe service and not having overcrowded buses. You know, we do recognize that mass usage will play in, but, but we're, we're still, we're still committed to making sure that people who ride our buses can, you know, keep safely six feet apart from, from each other. One of the things that we're really excited about is we are in the middle of installing Plexiglas shields between the bus operator, I think we have about half the fleet installed, and, and our customers to make a safer environment, both for our employees and our customers. One of the, one of the benefits of that will be that once we've got all of the bus, the Plexiglas installed in the buses, we will be able to allow customers to enter through the front door again, and then, then once we, once we do that, we'll be able to start collecting fares again, which is now slated, I believe, for the seven.
And that was my next question. Are they, are you still not charging any fares at all, or what's the?
Yeah, I, you know, I would, I, let me, let me just kind of explain what we're doing. So we are collecting fares because we're allowing, because out of safety, we're, we're having to have people board through the rear of the bus. We have no way to collect the fares on, on the bus. These Plexiglas shields, which will provide safety for our employees, will provide an environment where people will be able to enter through the front door and go back to collecting fares. But we do still have the, the real issue of social distancing that, that we're dealing with.
Okay. A couple of things I want to touch on. We, we still definitely, we definitely still need BRT for, in the plan for Highway 29. I, I do believe, you know, State Route 29 touches every single city south of our 20, including the city of Atlanta. I think it's very important that we make sure that that's in the mix some kind of a way. BRT down 29, I think it's very, very important, and again, you cover all of the cities through that route. The bus shelters and amenities, I see 63 new bus stop amenities. These are all new shelters from this year, is that right? Coming online?
All new, yeah, they're all new amenities. I don't know off the top of my head, the mixture of shelters versus benches. We do, we do have a policy that sort of guides which, you know, when we install a bus, shelter versus, versus a bench.
Okay.
They are all new.
That, that's good news. I reached out to Ms. Pine for a little detail on this map, because I didn't see 63 dots on this map here, but I'm, I'm looking, you know, my eyes aren't as good as they used to be, but, but I think she's going to give me some details, including the addresses and locations of some of the shelters that I need.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think, I, I, I think the, the difference may be, and I'll have Erica get back to you, but, but we do have seven that were planned at, at bus stops that are not in service as we speak because of the essential bus service plan, so we are looking for substitutions for those seven. So that may be the disconnect between the number of 63 and the dots on the map.
So tho, those, you're not going to build those anyway, because I'm assuming at some point, services.
No, we will, yeah, we will, we are committed to coming back to those, but it just doesn't make sense to put a brand-new shelter in, at a bus stop that's not actively being run. We will come back to those, absolutely.
Understood. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you so much, Jeff, for this presentation. MARTA's doing an outstanding job. I want to commend you on all the new covered bus stations that I've seen all around my district, especially northwest of the Mercedes-Benz Stadium on Boone and around, and trashcans and everything. But I do have a multitude of requests from residents who live along the Cascade Road corridor, and they're asking for more trashcans, and they, and, and most residents, the general feeling is that there needs to be more trash pickups because the trashcans are getting filled so quickly, I think your people are not able to clean the, around those stations quickly enough because there's just so much trash.
Okay.
All right, I heard you say absolutely, Commissioner Carron, is that what your, your constituents are saying too?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And, and, but keep up the good work. Everything is looking outstanding. Thank you so much to you and your MARTA employees.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Parker? If not, thank you again, Mr. Parker, and look forward to seeing you next quarter, if not before.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair?
Bottom of page seven, county managers items under open and responsible government, 20-0607, presentation of the COVID-19 operational response update.
All right, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, good morning. We'll step through this update as we normally do and hopefully provide a good, a good set of facts for you to take away. Let me give you some highlights for your coming attractions, I suppose. We are seeing improvement in our numbers. Again, these are trends in form of our real-time data, so the cases on a per day, new cases have dropped to 152 from 245, and if you recall, above 300 a month or so ago, so going positive direction. Also, the number of folks testing positive has dropped into the single digits, 6.4. The objective to really get where we want to go is around 5%, but that is showing, again, good progress. Hospitalization correspondingly has dropped from over 400 to now 338, and that gives us a cushion of over 850 beds and 150 ICU beds, so that's also good news. The death rate projections continue at around 1,100, and our morgue capacity remains stable, so still, still quite a serious situation. One other bit of good news, the number of cases in our jail has now dropped into the single-digit range, so that's tremendous progress from the last report. Testing, as we've said many times before, remains our hallmark. We'll see today we're close to 500,000 tests being administered. I will call again to your attention that that represents five times the number that have been done in Pier counties, and the reason that that is important is that we started this incident with over 20% of all of the cases in Georgia that were positive were in Fulton County. That now is below 10%, so testing, as well as all the other things like social distancing, masks, and again, appropriate medical care, have given our citizens definitely a better outcome than would have otherwise been achieved. Personal protective equipment, as you'll see today, is in good shape. We're still lacking on, I think it's gloves, and then on N95 masks, we're on an allocation that goes forward with a strategic relationship that we have with 3M. So there's still more to do, but we have asked our staff to not make any additional purchases or do any more distributions at this point until we resolve matters with our cities. We'll review an ad campaign today that, again, we've overviewed before with you, and now it's really beginning to hit the airwaves, the billboards and the like, and this will have over 130 million impressions, which means times people will see this over the next several months. So that's going to be quite extensive, under the theme of the community needs you, and I think it's creative, it represents a great value for what we're paying, and my hope is it will have a significant impact in terms of driving demand in our testing centers, which are a little bit off now, and you'll see we have plenty of capacity across all of our centers, mobile sites, as well as our hospitals. So having folks go ahead and be tested is of, of quite a bit of interest, and this ad campaign will highlight that. And I may know, may not know much about a lot of things, but I was a chief marketing officer at Fortune 50, so I think this is one where we're getting a great deal of bang for the buck. Also, we will overview three major capital projects, Assembly Hall, Courthouse, and Big Creek, just to give you and the public an idea of how much of a, an agenda we have and how it continues to be executed despite COVID-19 interruptions and, and obstacles. And I'm very proud of Ellis Kirby and his entire team for continuing to keep that program going. We will discuss with you the CARES funds in great detail today, as we do in every VOC meeting, so I just want to emphasize that that information at the purchase order, as well as allotment and expenditure level, is available, has been available, and will be made available further to our cities. But for the public benefit, that information, again, again, has been available and we will share it again today. All of the funds have been allocated, and we'll discuss that in terms of additional moves within that budget as we go through the afternoon. As well, in terms of finances, we are going to give you a little bit more insight into the 2021 budget outlook as we see it, with flat to declining revenues and what we would consider a modest ability to fund anything beyond current field positions, debt service, pension, and healthcare increases, therefore leading to a decision not to request an entire list of enhancements that often total above 100 million, but rather to work with you ultimately to allocate the limited resources that we'll have in a world where the budget revenues look to be flat to decline. So Mr. Chairman, we'll step through this with Ms. Roach, providing some upfront, and then going to Ms. Whitmore, and then finishing up in that manner.
All right. Excuse me, Madam COO, you with us? You ready?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. Good morning, members of the board. I, the county manager did a good job summarizing everything, so I'd like to go ahead and start with our emergency management agency and EMSI team, as well as our Board of Health Director, and as the manager mentioned, the other component that we're adding to this emergency respect, emergency management response will be our marketing overview by Jessica Corbett, our Director for External Affairs. So Matt, if you are ready, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you. Good morning, folks. And we'll go ahead and start off today with our overview. Doug Schuster will start that, and then we'll go ahead, and I will wrap up when we talk a little bit about our testing as well as our PPE. Doug, get us started, please.
Next slide. Good morning, Commissioners. Like the county manager said, since we last met on 8/19, our seven-day average for cases has dropped fairly significantly from 245 to 152. Most of these trends are very positive. I'm going to put Most of these trends are very positive. I'm going to put it in perspective here very soon, though. Uh, but like I said, two forty-five to one fifty-two, very good news. Our seven-day average in the hospitals for positive tests has dropped from eight point six to six point four. Um, our seven-day average for deaths since the last time we met has dropped from six point one to four point oh. Um, our morgue use does remain stable and is trending below our most probable modeling. Hospitalizations has dropped, uh, the seven-day average from four hundred and thirty, and we are at a high at six hundred, down to three thirty-eight. And as of yesterday, the the overnight number was three hundred and twenty. Please remember that that this hospitalizations, um, include Georgia World Congress Center and their sixty-bed addition. Um, also, I want to mention that our open hospital bed and C C U bed availability remain a concern, uh, mostly because of our non-COVID patients. Our non-COVID patients, I'll show you soon, are 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 those numbers are very high. Um, Dr. Paxton will talk to you more about some of the testing information. But we have monitored a a con- a continued decrease in testing demand. It's a very slow drop, but it does continue to decrease. And that is, um, in spite of, um, very good turnaround times for test results and plenty of available po- uh, appointments and short wait times at the sites. So I'm sure the marketing plan will cover why we think testing is still important. Next slide. Sometimes when I talk about trends and and we get very Fulton County-centric, it's ki- it it's kind of good to see where, um, you know, we are in comparison to really our neighbors and 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 in comparison to the country. If you look at the, uh, map on the left, you'll see a lot of red in the Georgia area. And right now, Georgia is currently fourth highest, uh, United States and territories for infection rate. So while our numbers are trending downward, they're still at what we would consider unhealthy levels. And it's important to remember that, um, the trends are good, but we still, uh, and and if you look at the slide on the s- on the right, that has the state of Georgia. Orange is considered, um, still highly infect, uh, infection ratio. Uh, the red is really where you should be having mandatory lockdowns. And the orange is you should be considering mandatory lockdowns. And so Fulton County is still in the orange, although, uh, we're getting very close to being in the yellow, um, as far as what they're considering transmission rate per one hundred thousand. So like I said, I I told you a lot of good news on the last slide, but this kind of puts it in perspective with the rest of the, uh, the state and the and the rest of the country. Next slide. One of the things county manager said is that we had eight hundred and seventy bed available on Sunday. That that's the highest number that we've tracked since we've been doing this. But I I generally, over the weekend, we we discharge a lot of patients within the county. So on Monday, that number dropped to five seventy-nine pretty quickly. Uh, five seventy-nine is still a a a good number for us. But, uh, keep in mind that, like I said, this includes Georgia World Congress Center. Um, and then, if you look at the blue bar on the far right, it says one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six non-COVID patients. Well, it was up to almost twenty-one hundred on Monday. And so the non-COVID patient use of our hospitals is really high-high during the week. Uh, people have put off going to the doctor for other ailments. And when they do that, their acuity seems to be greater, and their stays seem to be longer. So bed availability, and it 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 transfers over to, um, the C C U bed use, too. On your right, um, just after the last meeting, we updated the modeling. And the difference of the modeling from last time is the peaks aren't as high. And they pushed to the right towards the end of the year, about three weeks. So now the peak is expected, uh, towards the end of the October, uh, timeframe. Uh, the good news on this slide is now, we were trending above the red line for a long time. And now we're laying right on top of the green line, uh, which is the best-case scenario. So I think that's good. But as we talk to the Epi doctors, we need to be prepared for the for the fall, uh, that's coming up with influ- influenza and 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 other ailments that might be contributing to increased hospital use. So anyway, that that it's the, uh, the trend is good right now, but the projection has moved towards the end of the year by about three weeks. Next slide. Um, as you can see, uh, we still, um, have a lot of red days. Um, the last two weekend days, we were actually, um, not red. But for the most part, for the last six weeks, we've been at a kind of a severe shortage, especially in adult C C U beds. Uh, we were back in that again, uh, for Monday, uh, in a ri- in a warning mode. Uh, a lot of this has to do with the availability of, um, skilled nursing to to man those beds. The beds are available, but manning has become an issue. Um, and we and we do have a little bit of higher acuity of patient use at Georgia World Congress Center. Uh, but we're monitoring that, uh, closely. It's tied to the non, uh, the shortage is tied to the non-COVID patient use also. You can see the projection on the right looks very similar, a little bit lower, uh, on the peaks. But once again, we're trending on the green, uh, best-case scenario line. Next slide. Uh, uh, probably, um, I think the most telling thing that we track is the percent positives. The seven-day trend in, um, Fulton County for the hospitals. Um, the hospitals are testing, uh, probably just below fifteen hundred patients a day for COVID, which is a downward, a little bit of a downward. Probably two weeks ago, we were about eighteen hundred, and probably four weeks ago, we were close to two thousand five hundred. So you've seen, uh, uh, the number of patients being tested go down. But also with that, the the percent positives, the seven-day average is six point four zero. Um, getting back to what I told you earlier, for contact tracing to be effective, that number needs to be below five percent. So we're inching that way. You can see it's almost at a plateau. If you look at the right part of the screen, um, the overnight for the last two days have been around seven point five. Um, also, in in a week's time, the state's seven-day trend did go up from nine point zero to nine point eight, which is a little bit of an example how Fulton County is doing better maybe than their neighbors in the state. Um, a lot of the newer infections have kind of shifted from, um, metro areas to kind of rural areas. And I think that that number kind of bears that out. But once again, kind of encouraging news that we're down to six point four. Next slide. So, um, I I don't like ending with the death projection, but I think it's a good place for us to kind of talk about, um, something in Fulton County. Uh, while we were, um, point I wanted to bring up is while we were doing our planning assumptions and early on, we were assuming Fulton County, even though we're ten percent of the state's population, would have a higher death rate number because of population density, availability of restaurants, bars, and everything else. And we were actually at that early on in the pandemic. Um, that number has slowly trended downward, where we're at nine point two percent of all deaths. Um, so we have adjusted the projection to, uh, using nine point five percent because we've been below ten percent for over six weeks now. So you see that little bump where, which really is kind of, we're saving lives, right? Uh, so I think that's a good point. We're lying right on top of the green line, which has a projected death total of eight hundred one by December first. And the, um, most probable line is eleven sixty-four, and the worst-case scenario is almost seventeen hundred. And then lastly, um, like I said, a lot of time, next slide. A a lot of times I show you charts and graphs without perspective, and I think this slide kind of gives it. If you look at the top, um, uh, we have a current capability on the far right to test eight thousand five hundred a day. Right now, our demand is at thirty-eight point three percent. Uh, we would hope with the advertising campaign to be testing, uh, more than that, uh, closer to our capacity so that we can pick up asymptomatic people and isolate and interview and continue with the work. So we we have the capa- we're green for capacity, but we're yellow for demand. Uh, time to receive results is generally less than forty-eight hours at this point. So we're in the green. Our seven-day average on cases is of one fifty-two, which we consider kind of a yellow area. And, uh, our goal is to get that down below seventy-five a day. Our percent positives at six point four, once again in the yellow. And I told you, under five percent makes contact tracing, um, manageable. Hospitalizations, three thirty-eight, uh, which is right in the middle of the yellow zone. We'd love to get that under two hundred, especially going into flu season. Hospital bed availability, twenty-nine point two. We're at the green. But like I said, as of yesterday, we're right back in the yellow. And we've been in the yellow or red for eight to nine weeks now. Hospital C C U bed availability, uh, once again, we're close to the, uh, we're below fifteen percent as of yesterday. Those two numbers fluctuate a lot. They were good coming out over the weekend. Then availability is the one factor that we've been green since, since really mid-June. Um, our seven-day average on, uh, deaths is four point oh, and that is in the yellow also. And our morgue capacity is at seventy. Um, and then we're still working on some matrix for contact tracing to track. So that's all I got. I'm going to turn it over to Matt at this point. Next slide.
Thank you, Doug. As always, incredible job. Folks, just want to quickly talk about cumulative test numbers. As you'll see on the slide there, you'll see the breakdown of what we have with the Board of Health. Our core mobiles, about almost a hundred and nine thousand. Uh, that number has gone up above that since we reported to you, uh, submitted these slides for today's presentation, as well as our core partners, over these seventy-five thousand. And you'll see the other breakdown there. But the one thing I want to draw attention to, while it doesn't showcase it here because we're looking at our numbers that came in last night, we have exceeded the five hundred thousand mark. We have crossed that half a million, uh, tested barrier, uh, yesterday on September the first. And we will continue to go ahead and provide testing for all the citizens of Fulton County, uh, and all of the Spock locations that we have, the three fixed sites, as well as our, uh, nine mobile sites. So just something that, uh, we are proud to say that we have been able to achieve that, and we'll continue to strive to go past that. One of the things that we do not have on here, but we thought it would be appropriate to go ahead and just touch on, is the Super Spock. Uh, that's a location that, uh, we support, that, uh, so that is actually covering multiple jurisdictions, uh, but is at the airport, uh, Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport and one of their, uh, surface lots. And so far, they only operate Monday through Friday, but they have tested fourteen thousand five hundred individuals. That comes into approximately eight hundred and fifty-three individuals per day. A little shy what they were looking to, uh, hopefully accomplish at five thousand individuals a day. We don't know what the apathy is, uh, regarding testing. I know Dr. Paxton will speak a little bit to about that, uh, during her presentation. But our number-one job is to make sure that when the appetite is there, we're ready to go ahead and support it with enough capacity at our testing sites. You'll also see the breakdown of where we stand with our, as of eight twenty-seven, regarding some of the other ju- jurisdictions in our metro Atlanta area. Next slide, please. Before we get too far, I just want to go ahead and bring your attention to the to-be-ordered column. We are proud to say that everything has been ordered, uh, that you see on the screen. That is a true testament to the work that our team has done, as well as our Chief Procurement Officer, uh, Felicia, um, Strong-Widicker and her team, and, uh, also some of our partners in Dream. And we have done a lot of work to get to this point that we can say that everything has been ordered. The county manager did allude to in his opening comments about allotments. We are an allotment program for gloves and N ninety-five masks. Those are some of the hardest things to come by at this point, as well as sanitation wipes. It is important to know that we're not just competing with hospitals, states, and, uh, other federal partners who have extremely, um, strong buying power. We're actually now competing against, uh, smaller individuals that are coming into the market. Schools, churches, small businesses, physicians' offices, dental offices, things along those lines. So the fact that we, uh, were able to get into the the game together, uh, and were able to purchase for all the municipalities and had that strong buying power, it was able to get us to the point that we can say that everything is ordered, everything is coming in, and we actually were able to get in, uh, this fight at the exact right time. So we're proud to say that. You'll see green. Those are all things that we have reached the hundred percent mark. Surgical masks, uh, de- desk screens, thermal scanners, gowns. The blue are things that are still, uh, we're in a great position. Seven fifty-five to ninety-nine percent of what we would like to have in our inventory is in there. We're waiting for the other ones to be delivered. And then, once again, the red, the two on the top, gloves and N ninety-five masks, what we're on allotment program for. And finally, the sanitation wipes is what we're trying to get as they become available. If there ever is a question about, uh, shortages of, uh, P P E out there and how hard it is for people to get it, I would go ahead and tell you this morning, W A B E ninety point one Morning Edition had a great, uh, segment about the American Nursing Association talking about how the nurses, uh, out there, they're providing all levels of care, do not have the P P E they need. So we are proud to say that we're getting the P P E to the municipalities and to our first responders in those municipalities so they can have the equipment that they need to be successful. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Dr. Paxton for her portion of the presentation. Dr. Paxton?
Uh, thanks, Matt. Um, I have to admit, I'm a little bit distressed when I listen to your description. I mean, congratulations on getting, being able to get all these P P E. It's it's discouraging that it's actually kind of turned into a cage match, um, to, in order to obtain, um, obtain P P Es. But and nevertheless, that's where we are. Congratulations. So I'm going to give an update today on, uh, Board of Health. May I have the next slide, please? So, um, my update is today is fairly simple, one slide. Um, as has been already alluded to in the, uh, previous presentations, the measures that have been implemented the past week have resulted in marked improvement in our appointment availability and scheduling, and are getting results back to clients. And so same-day appointments are available every day, which is great. And our results turnaround time, as mentioned, has come down to between one and two days. Um, it's the, um, uh, Spock that, as at the Atlanta Airport, has been extended until September eleventh. And you've just heard what the figures are on, um, on the number of tests that are being 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 there. Now, um, what is you, many of you might have read in the papers, um, particularly in regards to other health districts, is that, um, as, uh, the schools are reopening and, uh, the institutes of higher learning, there have been multiple COVID nineteen clusters. And, yeah, even here in Fulton County, uh, we are currently working up, um, five as of, uh, yesterday. Uh, the, and, um, as many of you know, actually, the Atlanta Public Schools and, uh, Fulton County Schools are still in virtual learning, um, with plans to gradually bring back, uh, students into, at various grade levels, and slowly. And we at the Board of Health are working very closely with them, uh, providing information about the level of transmission in the, uh, community. So one thing I wanted to point out, though, um, is that one huge issue with the occurrence of these clusters is that, uh, the potential for community spread as these, um, as infected students go home is very great. And that has actually, this is not theoretic, this theoretical, this has actually happened in other districts. So, um, it's important, um, and there's a, there's a call for, uh, community, uh, for colleges and all that to set up a system whereby, um, infected students can actually remain in isolation on the campus. Um, right, you know, and so that, you know, therefore, you know, having it so that, uh, we're able, better able to contain the, um, uh, you know, the the epidemic and not spread it to, uh, friends and family, uh, when they, when they go home. As I said, this has actually happened in other districts. So we will be having a joint call with the, uh, between all the metro health directors, uh, Commissioner Toomey, Toomey and superintendents, um, uh, and chancellors on, uh, September sixteenth. So we can report back on the, um, upshot of that call after that takes place. Um, on other news, we have various M O Us, um, in, uh, being signed right now with the City of Atlanta, with Partners of Health and Partners in Health and Core. And in general, the scope of the covered activities, I've mentioned before, is about COVID testing and case and contact investigation and resource coordination of social services to allow cases and contacts to be able to main- maintain quarantine. Um, in addition, we have several campaigns that we're working on and launching. And these are actually separate from the, uh, campaign that you will be hearing about, um, uh, after my presentation. Um, and in, to be more specific, um, these, uh, the campaigns that I am talking about, uh, right And to be more specific, these, the campaigns that I am talking about right now include the seasonal influenza vaccination campaign, which will be, of course, linked to COVID prevention. There is also the Mask On campaign, which is again for masks and for encouraging people in a very focused way to use them. And we have our, another initiative that we are planning right now and hope to roll out very soon, is an initiative at the Spocks to facilitate contact tracing. You know, we have found, we have found out from our data that when we do contact tracing, that a large number of people report that they don't, they don't actually cooperate with the contact tracers because they say that they have already notified their contacts on their own. And we really don't have a way of following up on that. But we do think that there's a way to perhaps capitalize on that. And one would be, and two, is that when people actually come to be tested, that we provide them with information in various ways about contact tracing. And that we actually, in some way, we haven't figured this out yet, encourage them to, at that moment, think about who have, who have been their contacts during, you know, the previous several days. Because we will never, that is at a point in time at which people are most thinking about COVID and most interested in that. So we think that this might be an opportunity for us to start capturing some of that information. And again, we're working that out right now, but we think that that might have a good possibility of improving our contact tracing efforts. Now, in addition to all COVID, I mean, it's not all COVID all the time, even though it sometimes seems that way. And so in other Board of Health operations, we are still, you know, we, we are continuing, all of our clinics are open now, and we're continuing to ramp up the services. One other thing that we're doing is that we are so well aware of the ongoing longstanding issue of inadequate, of inadequate access to healthcare among, among our, among, in our community. And so we've been actively exploring ways to improve the provision of primary care services to be, some of these very undisturbed communities. And we have already put out an RFP for a primary care services at the, at Neighborhood Union. And that is basically, it's hitting the street now. We expect that we should have a vendor secure, hopefully by October, and that we'll then be able to, to, you know, to move that, to start that back up at Neighborhood Union. In addition, we're having lots of conversations now about how we can use our mobile units to get out into the community to provide not only the COVID services that we are doing now, but to expand that to other things, including, you know, to include vaccinations, but other primary care services. So that is a very, you know, important thing that we are, you know, continuing to work, continuing to work on. Now, before I hand off, I just want to go back a little bit more to COVID to talk about, to try to put in context some of the information that you have been given today. And I think that I want to start by saying that, you know, on one hand, we are, we've been seeing some very good trends. We've seen some good trending downward in terms of cases and, and if, you know, percent positivity. And all that is great. But what I want to, but I need, part of my role is to fulfill a bit of the Debbie Downer, or I should say maybe the Cassandra, or the person who, who, who has to put out certain warnings. One of the things is that, I've, I've been doing this for 30 years. This is not my first rodeo with infectious diseases. And what is well known is that this is actually one of the most crucial times that we could be in. Because when you start seeing improvements in whatever the disease is that you're looking at at that time, be it HIV, be it cholera, be it COVID, is that that is actually the most dangerous period for relapse. And, you know, as people sort of take their, their foot off the, foot off the wheel. So what, and so I want to point out that even though our trends are downward, you've got to keep in mind that our absolute number of cases is at least two to often, sometimes three times the, the number that it was even back in March and April. And it's good that we are, it's great that our percent positivity is trending, is trending down. That 5% positive level that I believe Dick mentioned is, is what is, is what WHO actually points out as being the limit of too high. So that is the, that is the limit, that which if anything above that is classified, classified as too high. And 5% is actually the basic minimum you would get to. However, most countries, in terms of trying to figure out when is, when is it the best time and when is it safest to be able to open up, you know, the economy and allow larger gatherings and all that, the actual aim is to have a percent positivity that's really in the 1% to 2% range. So that is actually the, what we should, you know, what we are going for is to get that as low as possible. So as I mentioned, we are at a critical point right now in the pandemic. We have cases falling during this late summer period, which is actually kind of consistent with what one sees with respiratory illnesses. But we know, and it doesn't take a crystal ball to see this, that we have a threat, a huge threat that's coming up right now as, as fall season comes upon us, is the weather cools, people are going to start going back indoors, more schools are going to open up, and venues are going to open up. And so this is the time that we need, you know, as the Board of Health, to be actually intensifying our efforts. We need to get, you know, everybody, you know, wearing masks when they're, when they're out and about, doing the social distancing, all the things that you've heard me and a hundred, other people say that we need to do. Because this is our chance to get that, to knock down the virus to as low a level as we possibly can. Because we know that in the fall, we are going to start seeing an uptick. All the conditions will be there for an uptick in, or uptick or maybe even worse in terms of our COVID thing. And on top of that, we are going to be seeing seasonal flu because that happens as well. So that is the, that is the impetus behind our doing a seasonal flu vaccination campaign. Because this of all years is the year to get a flu vaccine. In most years, we're lucky if we get to 50 or 60% of eligible people getting the flu vaccine. We need to do better this year. And so we're going to do an intensive vaccination schedule. So I, I think those are the, the main points that I wanted to get out today. And so that's my presentation, and I'll just hand over to the next person.
Madam COO?
We're going to go right into Jessica Corbett's presentation of the marketing, prior to taking questions from the board, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, everyone. I hope everyone is doing well. This is Jessica Corbett, Director of External Affairs for the county. And I'm going to kind of go into a little bit of the awareness that is a follow-up to what Matt and Doug and Dr. Paxton spoke about. They have built it, and it's my job to get people to come and take advantage of these wonderful resources, or at minimum, be aware of the resources that Fulton County has made available to residents. We're very proud of having, I think arguably, the strongest testing program in the state of Georgia. We, every person in this county has testing available to them at no cost. And so we really have a great opportunity for residents to take advantage of testing as well as those risk messages that Dr. Paxton alluded to about social distancing and wearing a mask. We also want to ensure that information is made available to people who need it the most. So I'm going to go, next slide, please. So as you all have heard from us before, we have really the, invested in a robust campaign to help us make residents aware of testing. And this campaign is built around the idea that each of us has an opportunity and frankly, a responsibility to, to make sure that we're aware of our infection status and that by, each of us has a role as a resident to play in the health of our community. So the real purpose of this campaign is around increasing testing awareness and adoption and decreasing risk behaviors. I wanted to mention that for anyone who is watching this presentation, we update our testing schedule online every week because we have a mobile, a very robust mobile testing program. So in addition to our fixed sites, we have mobile testing. And anyone can go onto FultonCountyGA.gov/covid19testing at any time and see the schedule for that week. And I'll go into the impact of that page in a few minutes. The Fulton, that our community needs you or you make Fulton campaign is built around both earned as well as paid and owned channels. And the paid channels include out of home, which is basically billboards, as well as digital and social ads, radio, and soon, coming soon will be television. Next slide, please. So you will see here some of the visuals for the, that we have today in our owned channels. So the image on the top left is the homepage image on the Fulton County website, which is kind of anchoring this campaign. And you'll see the usage, some, hopefully you all have seen these in your own social channels. But these are some of the ways that we're using the campaign in Fulton County's social media channels and digital properties. Next slide, please. Out of Home, this is where we are today with 10 digital billboards, which rotate to different locations, and 10 digital posters, which are basically smaller sized billboards. Those are already in place. During the early voting period before the August election, we had a period of time where we also used the MARTA station at, at State Farm Arena to amplify this campaign. We hope to turn that back on when early voting begins and then next, for the general election. We are also, people will soon see bus shelters. Those ads are in flight and should be coming live in the next few weeks. We will also be working with FITSCO to identify some additional billboards. We built kind of some property selections around where the pandemic has been growing. And as the, as we see more cases out, further and further out in the county, we want to ensure that we have additional billboards kind of going out further from the center of the county. So we are identifying additional locations there now. Next slide, please. So these are some of the images. I'm sorry, they're a little wonky looking, but these are some of the images. So as you're driving by and you see these, restaurants need you, businesses need you. These are some of the key messages to remind people why it's important to get tested. And the testing is free in Fulton County. Next slide, please. I wanted to just really quickly mention, as I wrap up, that overall, this campaign is designed to yield over 130 million impressions. The testing page I mentioned, that is where our digital ads are driving traffic. That page alone constitutes 10% of the visits to our website right now. And our website gets between 100,000 and 1 million visitors every month to FultonCountyGA.gov. So we already are seeing that there is a very high percentage of adoption. It is by far three or more times more visitors than we have on any other page on our site. So we know that, that there is mobilization, that people are getting, starting to get the information. And as these additional channels come online, as I mentioned, TV ads will begin running later in September. We will also have the billboards, and we will be continuing to build on our social and digital advertising, which really help connect people directly to that information about where the, about where our testing sites are available. We have also provided each of you, each of our commissioners, with a sample digital ad that you can use. It has your photo on it that you can use in your channels. And I was very happy to see many of you posting those on your pages, so thank you for that. We do have additional images that we would love to share with you all to use in your updates and your community and your constituents. And with that, I think I'll turn it back over to the COO.
Thank you, Jessica. Commissioners, unlike our previous renditions of the EMA report, we have given you a lot of information between EMSI on statistics, Dr. Paxton with her update, as well as Jessica. So we're now ready to take questions. I know that that was a lot of information, but we're now ready to take your questions on any one of those topics.
Thank you, Madam COO, and let's not be shy. A lot of information.
Hello?
All right, Commissioner Hall, then Commissioner Korn.
Okay. Sorry about that. All right, I'm going to start with, well, you know what? I'll start backwards. And since Jessica just finished her presentation, I'll start there. Great presentation, Jessica. I love all the new marketing stuff. And I just figured out, because I was looking at the top of the pages, and it says, "Out of Home." And I was like, what is "out of home"? So correct me if I'm wrong, but I was looking around to figure out what was "out of home." And I think that must mean outdoor media?
That's correct. "Out of Home" can include, it includes billboards. I mean, that's sort of the bread and butter. That can also include the bus shelter ads and things of that sort. So that is, I guess, an advertising term of art, so to speak. But that, that's what that refers to, is primarily towards and shelters and things of that nature.
Okay, that is absolutely great. And love all the different, I would call them slogans. They're really good. And also, so I know we're all dealing with COVID-19, but I'm hopeful that in the future, we'll become more creative about on-the-ground marketing and communications and really reaching the people where they are at their homes. Because one thing, you know, being, having been an IT manager for over 20 years, I always used to think that, you know, yeah, we're reaching the people as long as we have websites and we have email addresses and all that. But one thing that I've learned is that there's still a lot of people who don't use the technology. So we do need to do on-the-ground communications and marketing. So I hope that we can be creative in the future about that. I'm going to go ahead and move backwards to Board of Health. And if Dr. Paxton is there?
Yes, I'm here.
Great, okay. So in your presentation, you spoke about meeting with the superintendents of Fulton County School and Atlanta Public Schools. And I was waiting to hear about immunizations and what is the Board of Health doing in collaboration with the schools to address keeping the children, the, and youth's immunizations up to, up to date?
Yeah, it's a, that's absolutely a huge focus. And so we're sitting down to, obviously, we're already starting to give immunizations at all of our, at all of the clinics that normally do this. So that's already been ongoing and will continue. What we want to do now is we want to be more proactive about getting these out into the community. And so that's what, that when I made mention of our, using our mobile units to do that, that's what I was, you know, referring to. So that is going to be, and so we're working on the actual details of that right now. And also, I just want to And also, I just want to mention, I think, Commissioner Hall, you actually reminded me to another thing. When you're talking about getting out into the community, one thing I did forget to, to mention is that this week, we are starting with our initiative with CORE that's related to contact tracing. We're starting our pilot with our actual boots-on-the-ground contact tracers going out and testing logistics of getting, getting to these people. And as we never want to lose an opportunity, once you, when you contact somebody, you really want to do as much with them as you can. And so, we're also exploring, you know, ways of how we can get more information out into the community using these boots-on-the-ground operatives. So, I just want to mention that because I forgot to mention before and Commissioner's Hall's statement made me think about it.
Well, Dr. Paxton, thank you. And with the immunizations, can you share with me or Anya or the rest of the board, if they want any of your communications that you're sending out for the schools to, to let the parents and teachers know that Board of Health does have the immunizations? Because every time I mention that Board of Health does have the immunizations available at the health centers, people and parents always say, "Well, how do we find out? We never knew this information." So, if I can help to spread the word, that would be great. You can just send whatever flyers or electronic communication you have over to me. And then, as far as CORE, that's great information. I'm glad you spoke about CORE because I have a question about that. From attending NPUE's meeting last night, there was a constituent who asked, "Well, how do we know what CORE's mobile unit schedule is? Is there some way we can obtain it? Can you share it?" And I haven't even seen necessarily a mobile unit schedule for where CORE would be located so that people could, you know, do walk-up testing through their mobile unit. So, if there is, if there is one, if you could share that or if someone, if one of county manager, anyone knows, has that information?
Commissioner Hall, this is Jessica. I can't refuse that. We work, each week, we work with CORE as well as the Board of Health and update. The web is www.fultoncountyga.gov forward slash COVID-19 testing. And it's updated weekly to include the mobile unit sites as well as, of course, the hours for our kind of standing sites, those, the one at the Center for Health and Rehabilitation in North Fulton and then South Fulton. But the mobile schedule is there, it's updated weekly. Sometimes things might change if there's a rain out or something like that and we would update it there as well. So, we encourage anyone in the community to visit that and I'll, I'll send that to everyone in just a moment.
Okay, so that's gonna have the CORE mobile unit information in there because they're expecting something like, you know how Fulton Fresh Mobile Market has a, a schedule of locations and times and dates that they're going to be all across Fulton County. They were asking if there was something like that as far as mobile testing.
So, I'm sure, I will, I will send it to you to take a look at. I believe it will have the information you're looking for, but if it doesn't, then we will certainly be glad to look into that and try to make sure it meets your needs.
Yeah, save it more than one week.
All right, great. And then, I'm going back to Matt's presentation on page 12.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, a couple of questions. This is really great information because one of the questions that had been coming to me repeatedly were, was the total amount of PPEs that we have ordered and all of that. But even more so, there are a few questions that aren't answered by this particular slide and that is, do we have an inventory control system in place that tracks the, the purchase and distribution of all PPEs?
Yeah, so we're actually, sorry, there's a horrible echo. I'll try again. We, we're actually doing a two-pronged approach on that at this time, ma'am. We are tracking that using internal processes as well as leveraging a county system called Maximo that the Strategy Office has been helping us develop so that we could do inventory management through the system that the county has adopted for inventory control overall. So, it's a two-pronged approach at this time, ma'am.
Okay, great. And so, so with that being said, can you provide a report that shows all PPEs that have been purchased from the beginning to date to current date? And how much the total purchase amount has been? And, and where everything has been distributed to? So, the number...
I believe, I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm sorry, no problem.
No, as I was gonna say, I believe Chief Financial Officer was gonna give you all a breakdown of how much has been purchased and the financial numbers associated with that. I will definitely work towards giving you the breakdown of what municipalities have received PP to date.
Not even municipalities, but everywhere, even departments and everywhere. So, where every single PPE that has been purchased has been distributed to. So, it should include not only municipalities, but departments and anywhere else?
Yes, ma'am.
Even if they've been distributed to the public.
Would not have anything distributed to the public minus the, the mask that we did receive from Health and Human Services. So, everything else would have been to return-to-work programs, whether it be the tax assessor or to other departments and then also to our municipal partners. So, I will work on that for you, ma'am.
Great. Thank you so much and great presentation, everyone.
Commissioner Carron?
Thank you, everybody. Great job on all of these presentations. Very impressive. Dick, great job coordinating with everyone. Anna, great presentation. Jessica, very good presentation. Doug, Matt. Couple of questions I do have and I guess I'll work my way back here somewhat as well. Jessica?
Yes, sir.
So, you were saying 800,000 to a million visitors per year on FultonGA.gov, is that right?
No, sir, that's per month.
That's per month?
Yes.
Per month, okay. That sounds like pretty good numbers. I'd like to see how that compares to, to some of the other large government entities, you know, City of Atlanta, Shakatah County, Gwinnett and Cobb.
Okay.
I don't know if you could grab that from some, from the PIOs from there, just to see where we stand in the, in the scheme of things, I guess. But, but, but great presentation. One of the things that Commissioner Hall touched on, reaching folks at their homes. Reaching folks at their homes. At the end of the day, a lot of people are in their homes and may not even see these billboards. And if you're whizzed by something at a bus, at a bus shelter, if you can figure out what it is, well, that's a good thing, but reaching folks in their homes. My question is, I guess, in terms of emails, do we send out a regular email blast of any sort county-wide?
We send it out...
I'll answer on that.
Yes, we send it out every week.
Okay. How, how large is our email blast list? I mean, just a ballpark number?
Commissioner, I would like to look at the most current numbers. It's around 25,000. However, this year, we have grown that list significantly with cooperation with elections and some other programs. So, it's, you know, 25 to 40,000, I would.
25 to 40?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you're saying 25 to 40,000 people, what do they get every week from us exactly?
I will be glad to send you our weekly email newsletter, sir. We capture information about, you know, all manner of county programs.
Is this the same one that we get? Is this the same one that we receive weekly?
We do share it internally as well. I hope that you are also subscribing to it. But yes, sir, we, we send it to employees as well as to the public.
I, I, I don't know if I'm, I don't think I'm subscribed to anything, but is it the one that you send us every week? Is that the same one that the public is getting?
I think we're speaking of the same thing, yes.
Okay, 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 good deal. I guess, and my question is, you know, so I'm glad we facilitated and set up a county-wide email blast.
Yes, sir.
Getting those numbers up, because that, that sounds very, 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 very low. All of us, I think as commissioners, I believe, have our own email constituent list of some sort or another. Now, this is just me talking, I can't speak for everybody else, but is there any way to aggregate these lists along with what you've got? And there may be some overlap in that. I know I've got nearly 10,000 that I reach via my constant contact. But, you know, we may have some more extensive lists that, that could add to that number and reach a greater number of people that may not be getting this. Also, and Dick, I guess I ask you this question. What's the possibility of, could we ask the Fulton County School Board and the Atlanta Public School Board about access to, to their email list to, to, to get things out in terms of, with emergency updates and crucial information to, to expand? You know, they may have another 50,000 emails that we don't have. So, I'd like us to look into the possibility of asking if, and then, and then, and then I hope we may have the bandwidth to do this, to, to add on that many. I don't know how many you can add on, but what do you think about the idea of getting, getting Fulton County Schools, Atlanta Public Schools and, and, and pulling in their email list as well so we can spread the word as far and wide as possible and get more messaging, more messaging out, which would reach more people at home, which, which is a very important thing? So, just to put that out there.
Thank you, Commissioner. I definitely think we can look into that and I appreciate the thought of, of adding your list. We will be very glad to do that. And there are some regulations, as you're aware, around email sharing and, and privacy. So, that's one thing that we would work with our provider on making sure that those lists are approved. But that's something that I think that when a person subscribes to updates from Fulton County, they're generally open to receiving information. And we, we could certainly, we're always interested and open to ideas about reaching more people.
Whether folks subscribe or not, you know, we're in the middle of a government emergency. This is information people need to have. So, I'm not, I'm not interested in waiting on someone to subscribe. I, I, I wanna get the word out and we get the information out to folks. If they don't have an interest in receiving the emails, there is an unsubscribe button, I'm assuming, along with normal emails, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I like to look at that in a, in a, you know, obviously, we got rules and regulations for that stuff, but spreading the word to as many people as possible right now is gonna save lives.
That's correct.
Okay, Board of Health. Great presentation, one page, quick to the point. Let's say, you know, at some point, we're gonna be getting close to vaccine time. And I just want, I don't know when that'll happen, if it'll be first of the year or end of this year. But, but, but whenever that happens, I just wanted to, just, just to put this out here to make, for us to make sure that we're gonna coordinate with our cities and particularly with our mayors in a way that we probably have not done recently in terms of just coordinating. And I know we, we, we won't be the ones facilitating the vaccines necessarily, but we're helped and that's our purview. And I just wanna make sure when that does happen and when that's coming, that, that we're constantly updating our mayors in terms of what's going on, when the distributions are gonna happen, how they're gonna happen, how it's gonna be facilitated, however the federal government and CDC decide on doing that. I want us to make sure that we're constantly informing our mayors how this process is gonna look in terms of logistics and, and distribution when we get close to vaccine time. And again, I know that's out of our hands, but when it is time, I want the communication to be, you know, top-notch in terms of with our mayors. The other thing, I keep hearing about this five-minute test that's supposed to be this big game changer that may be coming. And I guess, i- i- is, is my question is, is CORE and our three main sites, I'm, I'm assuming they're gonna be looking to, to upgrade to the, to the most expedient FDA-approved version of the test, I guess. And I'm, I'm assuming, I know we've been doing that as we go along, but, and I don't know if this five-minute thing is, is, is available yet or not, but, but is it available and are we gonna be upgrading and how?
Okay. I hope you don't mind if you'll give me a little indulgence, indulgence of one-minute wonkiness so I can explain how, about these, about these tests. There are, in general, as I've mentioned to several commissioners, you know, in, independently, the goal of public health, and particularly in an epidemic like this, is our ultimate goal is to keep doing research to find tests that are faster, easier, cheaper, more accurate. And so, that is a continual thing that we're, we're looking for right now. Now, there, and there are a number of tests that are out there, right? Now, you might have heard about antigen tests. In fact, you might have heard about saliva tests. You might have heard about some, about some others. And I, and as a researcher at heart, I'm happy about this and this is all, that this is all going on and that these are being looked at. And in some cases, in like, you know, particularly at some of the universities that have the capability, they're actually using some of these and gathering more data about it. But what you have to keep in mind is that since, like, for example, let's talk about the, I think, the county, the county attorney asked me about saliva tests, which are being used right now at, in, I think, University of Georgia, or no, Georgia Tech. And that's a very, very promising technology. The thing is, so it's being tested, it's being looked at, it looks like the sensitivity is coming up and that it might soon approach what we're currently, what we're currently using. However, in order for those tests to be widely used, remember, we are dependent on a system of private laboratories. So, those laboratories have to make the investment. It's a totally different system to process those, those tests than the ones that we are using right now, which are PCR-based. So, they would have to make a very big commitment to switch over to those sorts of things. It just hasn't happened yet. So, it's actually, we don't, we couldn't, we could not move over to that system right now in our, in our, in our spox because there, the laboratory capacity to process them on the scale that we need them to is simply not there. And that kind of holds true, holds true for some of the other tests that are, are coming out. So, our goal is that we, we monitor that constantly and we are always hoping that, you know, my ideal test, my ideal test would be a simple, like, you know, a simple strip that you put into your mouth every day after you wash your, after you, after you brush your teeth, that tells you whether or not you're infected or, or not. And, you know, we might get to that point, you know, at some time, but it's not gonna happen now. So, what we, the, the, the only test that we really have available to us now, which is highly accurate, is the PCR test that we're doing in the, in the, in, in our spox because that is available for us to do on the large scales that are needed. So, I, my hope is that eventually, we will be able to get to faster, better, you know, cheaper, you know, tests in the future. But at the moment, we are doing, we are using the most appropriate test.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. That, that sounds good. All right. Matt, again, great presentation. I'm glad we got everything ordered up. So, that's one less thing to worry about, I suppose. Talking with some of our city council members and mayors, I guess previously, you know, we have been delivering PPE to the cities for, for, for some while, I'm assuming now, to, and, and I guess we started, I'm assuming we started with the fire chiefs, police chiefs, with that kind of a thing, is that right?
The first delivery was in August, sir. Once we were able to get enough product in-house to be able to do a full delivery to all the municipalities that we are responsible for, we actually have emergency coordinators. So, by Georgia law, there's one emergency management agency for jurisdiction, that is our juris, that is our agency, sir. Each one of our municipalities, we ask them to go ahead and identify, lack of better terminology, a belly button, an individual that can serve as an emergency coordinator for us that can then connect us to the rest of that municipality. We work with those individuals and that's how we came up with a lot of our planning assumptions for purchasing PP and that is who received the product and then was supposed to distribute it within the individuals that, within that community, somebody with that municipal government that performed the tactical operations.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking, before the August distribution, I understand there was some distribution to, through the fire departments back in April.
So, that did not come from us, sir. So that did not come from us, sir. There is something that, it's called a strategic national stockpile. Individuals of these municipalities, if I, if I may, if individuals from these municipalities, especially our public safety partners, when it came to fire and EMS-based services, they could request resources, personal protective equipment, very specialized, through a ready-op system that the Georgia Department of Public Health had in place. They received those resources from the federal strategic national stockpile. And then it came to our warehouse where we went ahead and processed that and made sure that it was distributed to the municipality. So that's the role that we played is by being the collector of the, of the product that was requested from the federal strategic national stockpile.
Okay, so, so, so we had a hand in distributing that early distribution from the stockpile back in April.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got it. Okay, I wanted to make sure that, because, because, you know, I wanted to make sure, so the first, because some of the mayors do report, they received PPE from the federal stockpile back, back then. Now, a lot of that was dry-rotted. I don't know if you'd heard about that, but some of that was reported as coming in dry-rotted. Obviously, it had been stockpiled up, I guess, for a while or whatever, but, but I'm assuming most of it was usable. But I'm sure, you know, you know, they were glad to get it then. And the future.
Initial allocation for things that were a little more recent in the stockpile, as it got to the end of the, I guess you could say the bottom of the barrel, for lack of a better way to describe it, they started running into products that were at the end of their lifespan. So they pushed out the latest stuff first and then they started getting to the things that have been on the strategic national stockpile shelf a little bit longer. We dear hit some complaints about individuals saying that the bands, the elastic bands were not functioning on the masks and such. But that is the best that we had at this time from our, from the federal strategic national stockpile.
Right. And that's, you know, that's bound to happen. Obviously, stockpile stuff out of, out of the bounds of our control, understandable. You know, you're going to get that. One of the other issues I've had with some of the cities, one shortage, a couple of them have had, a bigger need has been gowns and sanitizer. Gowns and sanitizer seem to be coming up a bit short, so I don't know how we stepped that up, but apparently that's a shortage going on. I've heard at some of our assisted living facilities as well. They were good on masks, they're good on gloves. Gowns are harder to come by, so I, I'm assuming you're well aware of that. But I just wanted to mention that, that, that was one issue that has, that has come up with the mayors. The, our community relief packages, we've done two phases of them and I think they were very effective and obviously there are thousands of people that were very thankful for those. The phase three community relief package, I don't know when we're going to get that together or get that going, but I guess we need to probably roll it out pretty soon because our community partners that we distributed to in phase one and phase two are pretty much out of funding and, and running out of funding. This is a five-by-seven card that I distributed with the mask that I distributed. It includes, I don't know, about 10 of our community partners that we have funded. And all of these numbers and websites, when residents go to them, they're saying they're completely out. They don't have any money for rental utility assistance, you know, food, the whole nine, and they're out of some of the things we funded them for. So obviously, I guess everyone needs another round. I don't know how we're going to do that or when we're going to do that, but I'd like to know how soon. And I'm sure a lot of residents would like to know how soon some of those resources will be available again, as, as a lot of these outfits. Not all of them, but a lot of these on this card have exhausted all of their funding, but they're still getting calls even twofold from three months ago, when, when we started rolling this stuff out, so just FYI here. I'm no longer distributing this card with the mask that I'm distributing. And we're right at 28,000 masks that we've distributed so far and we're still looking to get more out, as many as possible. Last thing I got, I understand, you know, the mayor's meeting last week, I'm glad we had that. I understand there was a follow-up meeting and I heard it went, went well. We're getting some information back to them. Chair, I'm sure you're going to speak to all of that. One thing I did hear from some of the mayors was a concern of the Atlanta overlap issues. So I guess y'all will discuss that at some other time, but that's one thing I did hear with that. Last thing I got, in terms of our cities, fairness for our cities, we did increase funds. I think it was a good step. I think it's progress. In my opinion, I do think we still have a little ways to go. $25 per resident allotment is, I don't think personally is still enough for our cities. Obviously, the governor set the 174-50 mark for all of the other cities are receiving that per individual. Our cities obviously are not. I think taking a look at another mark, perhaps a $50 mark at minimum, which would bring us up somewhere around 30 million for our cities, I think is something that we need to consider, considering all of our other cities and the state are receiving 174 per individual. So again, I'm hoping that we look at that and visit that again in terms of increasing funding for our cities, who I do believe deserve a bit more. Again, I remind you all that the only criteria, the only criteria for us receiving this money was population, point-blank period. And none of that would have been possible or happened without our cities' populations. It was the only criteria. That's why we got the funds. We're glad to get it. I think we've done a good job with expediting a lot of these funds, but I, I do think we can do better. And communication with our mayors, again, I think it's a top priority. So that's all I've got.
Commissioners, at this time?
I do have a, I do have a couple of things that came out of the whole conversation and questioning that Commissioner Khan just did. So I want to just make sure I heard correctly. Jessica, did you say that you currently have 25,000 to 40,000 people on external affairs email distribution list?
Correct.
Okay, and that concerns me because I have about that same amount just within my own district as far as the, the number of contacts that I have in my distribution list. And so it concerns me because I feel like you should have at least five times more than that because you're talking about, or should I say, six times more than that because there are seven commissioners. And you're covering the entire county. So is there any, how are you working toward growing your email distribution list to reach more of the constituents?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. I think that's a great question. I'm sorry, I'm getting a bit of an echo, but we have, we have a number of things that we do. We do in, when we have in-person events, and of course, that is disrupted. We have, we offer signup sheets. We, it is available on our homepage of our website. And like I said earlier, we have grown the list this year, so I'd like to also be able to offer an updated number on that. We do not buy lists. We do not, you know, we capture them from a number of different sources, but I wanted to be clear that I know that that is something that we don't, we, we have grown the list organically over time is, is what I would like to say, but I, I think it's a great point and I appreciate the feedback today. And I would like to perhaps get back to you all with some, a, a full report on some of the ways that we are working to increase that and, and some, ask, task our team with some additional ideas on that.
All right, great. Thank you. And then the last piece is, I'd just like to know, is there a process in place for communicating with the commissioners and the community about what we are experiencing within Fulton County government, government as it relates to COVID-19 exposure? Because as you all know, most recently, we had an incident where there was a meeting that took place in our building and one of the participants in the meeting ended up having COVID-19 and they had it during the time that they were present in the meeting with all of these people. And I've had my own constituents who, that, that were a part of that meeting contact me and very upset at the fact that they were exposed in that manner. But then even after that, I, I haven't seen any type of email or communication that has gone to, not even to the Board of Commissioners to discuss or say anything about the fact that this exposure did take place and it took place in our building.
I think I might ask Anna to speak to that commissioner, but there is a process generally. I, I will say that I'm, I'm aware of the meeting you're referring to and because that meeting took place in my office, I notified this, that it occurred in our conference room and we did notify the staff who were in that room. But in term, there is a protocol in general for where the individual was when they were, where an exposure may have occurred, but I'll, I'll ask Anna, if she could perhaps speak to that or, or Ms. Whitmore.
Okay.
Thank you, Jessica, and thank you for the question, Commissioner Hall. We do have a very strict reporting process for positives within Fulton County facilities, which includes notification to Chief Human Resources Officer Kenneth Herman, as well as Joe Davis, who leads our Department of Real Estate and Asset Management. So we do have comprehensive information about those who have tested positive. We have not circulated that list. What we try to do is we do notify departments that are within proximity of the case. So if the board is interested in receiving information about positive cases within the county, we're happy to develop a report from the information that we gather and circulate it to the board.
Okay, so there should just be a protocol of communication, period, because we're talking about people being exposed. My team come into that office and to print things and to get the mail out of the box at the front of the 10th floor and, and take care of business and, and leave. But we should know immediately if there's something going on in the building so that we don't expose our own staff, our employees, anyone else to a potential risk. And so I'm hoping that you guys can just, for the future, because this thing is not going away. In the future, can you please notify us on anything dealing with that? Because the last thing I want is for a constituent to call me and I don't even know what in the world they're talking about. And they're talking about it happened in the building where I'm sending my team and I'm going in there. If I, if I have to run in there to grab something, I mean, I want to know. I don't know about anybody else, but I do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much.
I had one other brief thing, just one second. With the email list, Commissioner Hall mentioned, yeah, 40,000 names, it's good, but you know, that's less than 5% of the population of this county, obviously. I thought about one thing, though. You know, we're, we're in the red-hot center of business for Georgia, you know. We've got, what, 18, 19 Fortune 500 companies statewide, at least a dozen of those in metro Atlanta. I would imagine at this point, if we were to call any of our corporate partners and ask for their email list, I think they would gladly give it to us so we could reach out to as many people as we can about these testing sites, about the precautions, about the upcoming things that are going on. And we could expand that email list exponentially, you know, I, I, you know, I said in, in, in my head, you know, you know, we, we were to reach out to Coca-Cola or Home Depot or whatever have you. And I think they'd be happy to share those lists for government purposes. Obviously, we're not selling anything, but, and obviously, that doesn't include all Fulton County residents. But I think there are a lot of opportunities to expand those lists. There are companies that have hundreds of thousands of email, Fulton County residents' email addresses that we can gather if we just ask for and we wouldn't have to pay $1 for. I'm sure they'd be happy to partner with government if we just made the ask, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. We will definitely be coming up with a plan to address this. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah, I think technically the way that has to work, we could maybe send them our email newsletter and ask them to send it out, but I don't think they can just share their list. They might be able to share our information with their list, but I don't think they can just share their list with us.
We could work it that way, yeah.
Thank you, my share. Other committees?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Housman?
Yes, thanks, everyone, for the update. Good news to see the drop in cases, especially the drop in hospitalizations. I hope we're on a, a good path. I recognize, though, that, you know, it's not going away and we've still got a lot of work to do. I'm curious with our ad campaign that's underway and, and various other efforts, with the decrease in the demand for testing that we're seeing at the moment, who are we now recommending gets tested? Who's the target group to get tested at this point?
I think that if Dr. Paxton is still with us, there, it might be good for her to update about the, the CDC guidelines because we, we have had a very blanket approach to all residents, but I think Dr. Paxton could probably speak to that.
Yes, you, you may have seen that this has actually been a, a front-page news item for a bit since the, there were guidelines that were put up on the CDC website recommending, well, basically saying that people who are asymptomatic do not need to be tested. And that created a firestorm among public health professionals and we vociferously disagree with that. And so, and many states, I believe it's up to at least 33 now, are not going along with that recommendation. So the current recommendation, we actually in Georgia are continuing with our recommendations that we have been following for months now. So specifically, we, we know that up to about 40% of COVID infections are asymptomatic and the only way you're going to find those is by testing for them. We also know that, for example, people who are known contacts of a positive case are at high risk of actually being symptomatic, I mean, I'm sorry, of, of, of being positive. So our recommendation has not changed. So for people who are known contacts of a case, they are still supposed to do 14 days of, of quarantine and they will get tested at some point during their, during that quarantine period, usually at age of day 10. Now, and we also are not, at, at our spots, we are not screening for symptoms. So still, anyone who wants a test can get a test. And we certainly encourage anyone who feels that they, they might not be a known contact. They might not have been contacted by us to say you've been in the vicinity of someone. But we certainly would, are encouraging anyone clearly who has symptoms should go get a test. We are encouraging anyone who is in a high-risk situation to, to, you know, to, to continue to come in to, to get tested. So we really have not changed our, our recommendations.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you right, if you think you've been exposed or come in contact or have any feelings that you might have, be developing symptoms, then you need to get tested.
Yes, I would recommend that, yes.
All right. And then what, what sort of time is it taking to get results at this point?
Well, it's gotten great. I think, I think we have a couple of people even on this call who have actually recently experienced that. And we're down to as, as, as early as 24 hours, but usually we, we tell people now one to two days.
Yeah, I, I know a person that went to a, a different location and it took eight days and this was just within the last week, so.
Was that one of our locations?
No, no, no. It was through CVS.
Oh, yeah.
But, you know, I'm just curious about our timing and, and I think that's another thing that should be communicated. I think a lot of folks that had heard that it took 10 days to get results back may have thought it didn't, it wouldn't matter if it took that long, what the results were. So as we're communicating our message, I, I think that the length of time, average length of time should be noted. And there obviously needs to be a good way for folks to follow up on it if it takes longer than what they're told when they go get tested. Dr. Paxton, you mentioned an MOU with Atlanta. I know we've got Spocks all over the place. What, what exactly is that MOU?
Yes, this, this MOU is in the city of Atlanta is specifically to deal with basically three areas. It's additional testing, then it's also to deal with contact tracing. Um, it's um, additional testing, uh, then it's also to deal with contact tracing because contact tracing has been everyone's uh, you know, bet noir. Um, and so we are having, um, we have an MOU with them to um, do uh, contact tracing for the most difficult people. We have about, there's up to like fifteen percent of all our, of all our um, known cases that we get reports on through the uh, laboratory system. We can't get in contact with them either because they are, don't have a valid phone number, or their address is incorrect, or they just don't want to talk to us. And so what we are working with, with Core is to um, to develop a, um, a system of actually going out and uh, as we call boots on the ground, a cadre of contact tracers, and even more bilingual, because we have, we have noticed there are certain zip codes and certain area codes that have a higher proportion of people that we are, that we have difficulty reaching and that they will be going out actually to these people's homes or businesses or wherever it is that we are to, to, to find, to find them. Um, and in addition, as a, as a very important component of this, uh, we have, we know from uh, work that's been done in other states such as Massachusetts and New York, that uh, approximately twenty percent of uh, people who are um, uh, COVID positive report and about eleven percent of their contacts report that they would, will, are unable to maintain uh, isolation or quarantine because of um, social service needs. So for example, they need to work because they have to pay their rent. They do not have access to food or deliveries or, or things like that. Uh, there's a myriad of, of reasons. And so one of the things that we are working on is um, this resource coordination um, uh, to enable people who are COVID affected to be able to maintain um, quarantine. So as part of this with uh, Core, we are hired, we, they're hiring a cadre of resource coordinators whose job is, is solely to hook up these people with the needed social services uh, so that they can maintain quarantine. So, and so our, our ultimate goal is to develop, you know, this is sort of a pilot. We want, we want to be best in class, you know, in a way about this, because, because contact tracing becomes ever more important to actually the, as, as you get closer, as you actually lower the numbers of infections in, in the, uh, in the community, contact tracing becomes even more important because you need to stamp out the, you know, the disease. This is one of the ways that we do it. So we want to see what works and what can be adapted to be used in perhaps even a less intensive, uh, intensive way. So that's one of, that's what we are working on uh, with Core.
Okay, so um, any arrangement with Atlanta, that we do any work in Atlanta, since they did receive Direct Cares Act funding, there's a, a financial arrangement that's put in place. I know it was mentioned earlier, overlap with money spent in Atlanta. So with the conversation with our cities and limited resources, it becomes very important, as you know, um, that we can um, you know, make sure that, that our resources are put in the right place. So is there a financial arrangement as well with this MOU?
Yes, yes, there is.
Okay, um, so y'all are trying to keep up with, with all the expenses that, that are being done in Atlanta for accounting reasons?
Well, we have to, you know, that's, that's the condition of our getting money. We, we are actually in the final day. We're actually, I've been going in and out because um, we are uh, dealing with getting the final sign off on the um, on the, on the contract with both Core and with the city of Atlanta. So our hope is that we'll get the final signatures um, you know, by tomorrow.
Well, I just think it's important for the public to understand that, that we are being careful and making sure that our money goes where it's supposed to go. Um, and, but working with Atlanta in the process as well, because we are all in the same county regardless of, you know, what zip code we're in, and we do have to work together. You mentioned the airport Spock also. Um, is that in Fulton County or is that in Clayton County?
It's actually in Clayton.
So is Clayton helping to fund that Spock?
No, well, it's not, it's actually not really being funded by either of our two districts. This was an HHS initiative.
Okay.
And so it's coming, you know, they're funding the, the bulk of this, but what they have asked is to, for the districts to um, contribute uh, in the turn, in, in the way of a certain amount of personnel uh, to, to help with this. And so I don't know how many have come from Clayton, but I think we have one or two that are onsite um, every day.
Well, again, these are questions the public is asking, so I think it's important that we're transparent with uh, where our funds are going. Um, as far as the PPE conversation that we had earlier, um, I agree with Commissioner Hall that we've got to be very clear with what we're doing with PPE and where we're, you know, how much we're spending and where it's going. So I support that transparency in that report. Um, I am curious about the comment that was made about stopping PPE distribution until the matter is resolved with the cities. Did I hear that correctly?
That's my comment. We'll discuss all that in executive session, but I did not want us to get further down a path if the cities did not feel like PPE was a, of interest to them, which was expressed on the Friday conference call.
So in other words, that would mean that some of the orders that have not been fulfilled fully might be stopped?
Well.
Mr. Manager, hold it. Hold this one. Because what I'd like for us to do because of the uh, pending possibility of legislation, it's not legislation, litigation, that we discuss anything related to the cities um, in executive session, which is on the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I can appreciate that, but that was a statement made in public and so I wanted to just ask about it and I think that's a reasonable question.
Yeah, I mean, the simple answer is we would be beginning another distribution this month, so that discussion can be held and decided um, in the uh, executive session.
All right. Um, and then there was also a question raised um, in our mayor's meeting about ambulance service. Um, and so I believe it was Sandy Springs indicated that they were having a big uh, financial hit because of COVID-related ambulance needs. And I know we supplemented in South Fulton early on in the pandemic services. Are we looking at um, how we can help North Fulton with their ambulance service needs and reimbursements?
Housman, um, Mr. Manager, if you'd like me to take that one, I, I can.
Yes, please, Lou.
Uh, when we first pulled together the program uh, for ambulance services support, we surveyed all of the fire chiefs across the county, both in North and South Fulton. Um, at the time, the need was requested in South Fulton. Uh, but as you properly stated, Sandy Springs is now indicating um, that they have a need in that area. And so I have talked with Chris, who's the director for the county's emergency services, and he and I will be scheduling a meeting with Sandy Springs to see if we can, if their needs have changed and, and how, and in what ways the county can support um, uh, their needs, uh, if necessary. So we will be following up on that. Thank you for raising it. Uh, we will be following up with the city of Sandy Springs specifically.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. I, I do think that you should go ahead and ask all of the cities, just to get an idea if it's isolated to Sandy Springs or not. Um, I would think if it's happening in one area, it's likely to be happening in others. Um, I appreciate you doing that outreach. Appreciate back in the early stages, um, when we did South Fulton, that you did reach out to North Fulton as we asked you to, so I appreciate that. Um, I do think that the one thing that would help a lot of our folks in the community understand what we're doing is if they could go on our website and see clearly what we're doing with our cares resources. Um, I know there's been discussion about doing that. I don't really see anything at this point that's obvious on our COVID website. Is that under development as well?
So, um, Commissioner, I'll, I'll defer to the CFO since the Strategy Office reports to her, but I do know that it is on her glide path to display all of the financial information that we look at on a bi-weekly basis and as an executive team even more frequently as it relates to the expenditure of Cures funding. And the goal is to take all of that data that we track on a daily basis and put it in um, a format that's consumable for the public on our transparency website. Um, Sharon, I don't know if I missed anything?
No, you covered it all.
Okay, good. I, I just think that would be extremely um, helpful. They answer a lot of the questions that we're getting that unfortunately we don't always have the answers to. Um, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Anyone else? All right, you're none, Madam CEO. Continue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next slide, please. Next slide. Commissioners, as you have heard today, we have made significant progress in the areas of both testing as well as PPE. Um, as you recall from our last meeting, we had testing um, as a yellow because we were just in the improvement stages of our um, results. Um, and, and the length of time it was taking to get results back to individuals who had been tested. I'm pleased to share that with the tremendous work of the Board of Health, we're able to turn that indicator to green at this point. We are consistently uh, returning test results um, in a span of time that Dr. Paxton feels very, very comfortable with, which is up to forty-eight hours. Uh, the one indicator that we have kept at yellow is the number of cases and the downward trajectory over a fourteen day period. Um, while technically we do need that standard, if you look at the data. Do have some concerns that can, to, that cost us to, in the abundance of caution, uh, keep this indicator as yellow. The first of which I mentioned before, which is that our positivity rate is lingering between six and seven percent.
Um, something is happening where I can't hear some of what, um, what, I can't hear some of what Anna is saying because it gets kind of garbled or, I don't know, like her voice is not coming through.
Okay, I'm advised to turn this way. I'm not sure if that's more helpful. Uh, I might not be able to, to face you all, but I'll turn this way. Does that help, Commissioner Hall?
Yes, that's good, but I don't think it was the fact that you weren't turned, it was something that was making your voice go in and out like the connection or something. And my connection is fine, I just checked it.
Okay. All right, we'll try this one more time. Um, that are, are, where I was, was that the reason we are keeping our uh, number of cases indicator at a yellow, um, is that the positivity rate is lingering between six and seven percent, which is currently above the CDC and NIH recommendation for adequate um, and effective contact tracing. That number is five. And so while we are still above that, uh, we believe it's appropriate to keep that indicator at yellow. Um, the other reason is because while Fulton County, through again, the work of our Public Health Department and our partners, are experiencing lots of improvements in all of the uh, areas that Doug mentioned before, um, that improvement is really unique to Fulton. If you look at our surrounding jurisdictions, they are not experiencing those improvements as well. And as you know, our constituents travel in between here, Gwinnett, DeKalb, et cetera. So while our neighboring counties and communities are not seeing the positive uh, trends that we're seeing, we, we think it's important to remain, um, remain cautious. And then finally, albeit um, uh, an improved positivity rate, it still remains a rate that is above the rate when the governor ordered a stay-at-home um, order back uh, when we first started. And so we believe uh, that because that number is still above, uh, when we closed our office uh, originally and when the governor issued the stay-at-home order in the abundance of caution, uh, we will keep that indicator at yellow and also keep our reopening phase at one for the time being. But we will continue to track uh, the number of cases, our ability to test and contact trace, as well as our ability to uh, issue PPE as stated um, earlier. Next slide. A Commissioner, notwithstanding the fact that we are um, still in a cautious and phase one stage of our reopening, I do want to assure you and the members of the public that are listening, that from an operational standpoint, the county is moving forward with program delivery on a very creative and aggressive basis. Uh, and more importantly, we are easily executing, as we speak, um, over half a billion dollars worth of uh, capital projects. So we're very proud of the work that is continuing in this environment. And I've selected three of our uh, major capital projects to uh, give you just a flash viewpoint of, um, as an update in this, in this meeting. The first, as you see here, is the Assembly Hall renovation. Um, we, that is a three-point-four million dollar project and it is very active. So if you are ever here at one forty-one, I encourage you to go on down and take a look at the progress that's being made. Please consult with um, Joe, Bill, or Ellis Kirby if you'd like to go, uh, because it is an act of construction. We want to make sure that you are properly equipped before you go down there, but please do go take a look. Um, we started design in March of this year and moved quickly to construction, which began in July. Um, and like I said, lots of progress going on with this particular uh, project. We expect that we will be done in December twenty-twenty. Uh, we'll continue to, um, be, 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 on, when we can, uh, continue, uh, Zoom meetings. So now we are.
Your connection began.
Connection, sorry. Um, right now, we are.
Better, much better.
Continue, maybe if we mute everybody else, so the background noise is off, um, until we finish. Okay, I'll try it one more time. I apologize for the interruption. So we will continue with Zoom as advised by the county attorney. Um, uh, so we can be in a virtual environment if this construction is taking place. So far, the governor has extended the emergency orders to October tenth, so I think we're clear on that. Hopefully, we do have an alternate space if we are required by the.
They won't come down here.
Might go down there.
Yeah.
The uh, chairman is going to get the uh, COO and bring her into this room, so he's holding everything for just a moment.
Do you want my speaker?
So.
I can't prepare.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I apologize for the interruption. Uh, again, we'll continue to be guided by uh, the county attorney on when we can resume um, in-person meetings. For now, the virtual environment has allowed us to uh, allow the construction in Assembly Hall to continue uninterrupted. Um, so we will continue with Zoom until that time, until such time as we have to be in person and we do have an alternate location um, for that. Next slide, please. Uh, the next uh, capital project we'd like to highlight is um, the Courthouse exterior stone project. That's a very visible project downtown. It is a ninety million dollar design build investment that, along with the bridge improvements um, that has been completed, um, as well as the plaza improvements at the government center, is really going to be a huge transformation for uh, the government, the downtown complex altogether. Um, so we're just over uh, a year into construction for this particular project, project, and we're about eighteen months away from uh, completion. Next slide, please. Uh, finally, Commissioners, the Big Creek expansion.
Finally, Commissioners, the Big Creek Expansion Project at $300 million represents the largest capital project that's currently underway with the county. The major milestones that have been completed on this project is site preparation, which included over 135 cubic yards of dirt moved, the conceptual design and layout for the expansion, all EPD approvals, and most significantly, Commissioners, we celebrated a successful construction start date just this past Monday on August 2024. So again, one thing I'd like to let you know about the Big Creek Expansion Project is that all of the project details are posted and tracked on the Public Works website for this project. So if you really want to see some impressive flyovers of the site and the progress, I do encourage you to visit that website to take a look at the progress of the project. Next slide. And before I conclude, the last thing I'd like to leave you with is that our FERCURE-3, as we affectionately call it in our executive team, that is in a holding pattern. And if you recall, that is the funding mechanism for our projects that are along the FIB corridor, the Public Safety Training Center, the animal shelter, as well as the Emergency Operations Center. I'll let the CFO assist me with any questions around the timing of the bond. But for now, those projects are in a holding pattern while we watch the economy and see what the appropriate time is to go to market for those as a funding mechanism for those capital projects. But other than that, again, we are continuing to move forward with much of the capital that has been on the schedule for this year. So I will pause now and take any questions.
I have a question.
All right, questions for the Chief Operating Officer, Commissioner Hall?
Yes, great presentation, Anna. But I did get a little confused because the presentation title said Fulton County Government Reopening Plan, but it seemed more like a capital improvements update. And so at first, I was trying to figure out how did this relate back to COVID-19 and the employees? Because I, but I realized it is really just a capital improvement update. So to go back to the actual reopening plan, what I'm missing is with the current testing, and it says the ability to test 100% of county employees returning to work and execute the Board of Health testing plan. Where are the numbers, you know, what number of employees have actually been tested positive at this point? Because the last time we discussed the number, I recall you saying that there were 67 employees who actually tested positive for COVID-19 within a matter of like two weeks. I want to say it's like two weeks. And that's what prompted us to withdraw and, you know, tell everyone, let's, you know, go back to teleworking and everything. So I would be interested in knowing at this point what those numbers look like. Because also, in having been around and doing things around the county and interacting with the employees, I have been told that there's not a consistent process that has been communicated to management across Fulton County Government, not only just the Government Center, but the courts and all around, to that management are supposed to follow. And some employees have said that they've literally been told to go test it and just come back to work to later on find out that employees around them have received an email, and the email says that they tested positive. So now, all the other employees have been exposed to this employee that has tested positive because everybody was told, just test and come back to work until you get your results. And so it's putting our employees in a really bad situation. So can you let us know, is there one process that is supposed to be communicated out, but it's not reaching everyone? And can we fix that situation so that all management receive the same process? And we got to fix this thing about employees getting tested and coming right back to work.
Commissioner, thank you for your question. I'm going to try to remember all of the questions you asked in between. I think the first one had to do with the correlation of the capital update. We are not really in a reopening posture right now. Again, we are monitoring the gating criteria to see when they turn all green. And then we will start perhaps exploring what our reopening is. And so I provide operational updates as an alternative to reopening. So if that created some confusion, I apologize for that. I've been told that at this point, there are 111 positive cases that have been identified throughout county facilities, and that is an update from the last time. And I think your last series of questions are around what is the protocol for when an employee is positive? We have worked very hard with Kenneth Herman, who has a great handle on this particular issue and has a very established protocol that have been communicated to directors. He is in the room, and I'm going to switch seats with him just for a moment so that he can share with the board and the listening public what those protocols are.
Mr. Herman. Good afternoon, everyone. Commissioner, yes, we do have specific protocols for each type of event. We have protocols for when an employee may have been exposed, when an employee is positive, and how they are to report back to work. Those protocols were communicated not only to the department head, but to each respective HR liaison as to what needs to happen. We've also had those protocols vetted by our Board of Health colleagues to ensure that we are in sync with the most recent CDC guidelines. I don't know if you want me to get any specific, but we do have those protocols in place. And each manager and each employee have been made aware of those protocols, Commissioner.
And when you said every manager at every, I want to make sure that that includes the courts and that we're not just talking about the Fulton County departments that report up to the county manager. Because I want to just make sure that we're covering all Fulton County employees.
Yes. We've had conversations with individuals in the courts, leadership, Superior Court, State Court, juvenile court, and to even include the clerk's office as to how they're supposed to carry out our protocols. Because we do not see it as a separate protocol for the courts or those departments that report up to the county manager. We see it as one protocol that we all need to be adherent to because of how problematic it could be if COVID-19 is too allowed to run wild within the county and the county's workforce that is currently on site.
Okay, so how are we addressing the issue that employees are being told to go get tested and just come back to work to later find out that they have COVID-19 and have exposed their entire office to it? I mean, I'm trying to understand how how are we, have you even heard about that happening? And have you addressed it in any way as far as the protocol and procedures that have been put in place?
I mean, I've heard of one instance where an employee was asked to go get tested and report back to work. And I guess what's happening to Commissioner is recently, as you may be aware, the CDC recently changed their guidelines about two weeks ago, which allowed us, which encouraged us also to update our guidelines. And they've moved away from the testing protocol as a way to clear an employee to allow them to come back to work. It's now basically guided towards the isolate, making sure the employee adheres to the isolation and quarantine periods, which allows the employee to come back to work. So maybe it was a conversation between the employee and their supervisor where we were transitioning from a testing protocol to a time-based protocol when that confusion may have occurred. But we've since communicated the changes out. And if you have some specific information, I can reach out to that department to ensure that they got a copy of the new guidelines and walk them through the new process.
Thank you so much, Kenneth. I appreciate that.
No problem, Commissioner.
Other questions, Commissioners, comments? Anything else for Chief Operating Officer at this time? Not, thank you. Next. I think it works better if we're all in here.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Sharon Whitmore, Chief Financial Officer. I have the CARES Act Fund update for you for this week's board meeting, as well as a brief update on the 2021 budget process. We can go ahead and move to the next slide, please. The summary document that's before you reflects the $104 million CARES Act allocation. It is now 100% allocated with the adjustment that was made at the last board meeting to increase the funds available for the Municipal Assistance Fund. We now have the fund fully allocated. We have also spent, at the very bottom of this, at the very bottom of the slide, we have now spent $35.1 million against that $104 million allocation. Next slide, please. In order to share with you the changes on both the budget side and the commitment side, we've been providing this slide, and I'll walk you through it to show you where the changes occurred. When we last reported to you on the 14th, excuse me, with the information at the last board meeting, which was as of the 14th of August, we were showing $21.1 million in community relief, $25.2 million in health response, $49.3 million in operational stability, $2.5 million in our municipality reserve, and $5.9 as a second wave reserve. At the last board meeting, you took action to increase the municipal assistance fund. And you'll see in the middle column under the changes that we increased the municipality reserve by $12.5 million. And we did that by lowering the funds that we had available in other categories. $1 million in the health response category, $5.56 million in operational stability, and pulled the $5.9 million from the second wave. The slide on the right-hand side simply shows you how the commitment levels change from one reporting period to the next. At the previous reporting period, we had reported total commitments of $90.9 million with the incremental changes that were made. In the board meeting, we've now fully allocated the CARES funds to the $104 million and fully committed those. Next slide, please. This slide is the current outstanding open purchase orders. If you'll look on the right-hand side of the slide, in the blue line, it says total open POs. We are currently showing $34.8 million in open POs, of which we have paid $9.3 million against those open POs. One line down from that, the green line that says total closed POs. We have $5.1 million of purchase orders that have been issued and fully received and paid for. So we're showing that in both the PO line and the paid line. So that brings the total of purchase orders that we've issued against this $104 million to $40 million. And the total that we've expended against those POs to $14.5 million. Next slide, please. On this slide, this slide provides you with a look at what we have in placeholders and commitments and payments. On the placeholders slide, which is the upper left-hand corner of the slide, we are showing $16.9 million is what we have in placeholders. The two largest components of the placeholders are $7.5 million remaining for PPE acquisition and $8.3 million that we had allocated towards the testing plan that we have not encumbered at this point. Down below in the commitment section, we're showing a total of $26.3 million in funds that we have committed to spend. The largest component of that $26.3 million is now the municipal relief fund of $15 million, followed by the funds that have been set aside for our agreement with Core for $3 million. And then the funds that remain in the second community relief package of $2.8 million. So those are the three largest components of that $26.3 million. There are other items in there of note. We do have funds set aside of $900,000 for the postage. The Board of Commissioners for elections, postage for elections. The Board of Commissioners did take an action at the last board meeting to increase our postage account. And so we should see that balance move over into a purchase order status very soon. And we have also set aside $1.1 million to cover incremental costs in the county's health insurance for employees for those plans that we are self-insured in, for employees who have been impacted by COVID and the anticipated medical costs associated with those. And then the last large items in that category relate to IT investments for our continued effort to increase our ability to be a more virtual and mobile workforce, as well as to complete some of the projects associated with virtualizing court services. In addition to that, we have some resources that have been set aside for the elections response for the call center and poll worker incentives. On the right-hand side of the column, I mean, of the slide, we have the dispersments that were dispersments that were not related to purchase orders. Those totaled $20.6 million. When you add that number together with the $14.5 million from the previous page that we've paid out against POs, that's how we arrive at our total paid of $35 million. So when you take the amount that's paid along with our placeholders commitments and issued purchase or issued and open purchase orders from the previous page, that's how we arrive at the $104 million. Next slide. This slide is showing you our progress in making payment against the two community relief packages that the board has approved since April of this year. We have a total of $21 million that's been budgeted. We have that fully committed with the action to approve the digital training program with Goodwill. And we have expended $13.2 million of the $21 million in our total community relief package. Next slide, please. We wanted to give you an update today of our status with regard to the first round of the municipal assistance package. Municipalities submitted to us their requests and support documentation on August 1st. There's been a team in the Finance Department that has been reviewing those packages. So we are at the point now where we have reviewed everything. We have some outstanding information requests with several of the cities. And I have seen email exchanges this morning where they are still back and forth ensuring that we get all of the required support documentation and explanation for items that have been submitted for reimbursement. We expect to have the first payment to those municipalities included in our check run this Friday. For those that are where we still have an open item on the support documentation, we are going to go ahead and pay what we have. And then as those support documentation items are cleared up, we will issue additional payment against those requests. Next slide, please. I think the manager is going to speak to this slide. regarding our response or, or thoughts on the response to the mayor's meeting from last Friday.
Yeah, thank you, Sharon. So this will finish out the CARES section and then I think we could take questions on this and then Mr. Chairman, if okay, we'll talk about the budget, take questions on that and that'll finalize our presentation. The mayors from the meeting on Friday had four requests, which we have listed up, listed on the left side of this column, transparency, coordination, limitations on spending and then additional resources. We have begun to work all of those to be responsive. So on transparency, we are working now to obtain data from the nonprofits and the Board of Health in terms of service rendered. We'll have to determine if there are any limitations in the Board of Health specifically that would be HIPAA-related. But our goal is to provide a summary of that data whereby you can see at a city level where service has been delivered. We will publish that on our open government website, so not only obviously can the mayor see it, but citizens can see it. In addition, I've asked Jessica to begin to send directly to the mayors a copy of this presentation, of course, which has been provided every two weeks since the onset of the COVID-19 event, because I think it provides a good summary, as you well know, of our initiatives as well as the, the funding requirements that are, that go along with those initiatives. In terms of coordination, we have offered a monthly and or quarterly meeting with the mayors. I think we're waiting to hear back from them, but it appears that monthly would be the preference. And certainly the subject of COVID response, but in addition to that, as we move along, transportation and transit is quickly becoming ripe for discussion and a decision moving into 2021. And then our study on wastewater and sewer capacity in South Fulton likewise is becoming more clear and needs discussion and decision. So at a minimum, those three big subjects would be in front of us. We would continue to include the cities in a weekly incident command coordination call that Matt Kalmeyer has today. So that would continue and then we would add an invite to the city managers to join our twice-weekly call that we hold with emergency management and the Board of Health, which again starts with the epidemiologists report any trends in that world where we might target mobile sites based on a heat map, any of the regional hospital coordination issues that can arise. So it's a robust call that occurs again twice a week and they would be invited to, to join that. In terms of limitations on spending or the desire not to have any limits inconsistent with CARES, we don't believe that we do. And we'll provide more information from our county attorney and outside counsel to that end in executive session today and then push that out to the cities. But as you can see here, we'll continue to rely on that advice from council in terms of eligibility and, and defensibility of any cost. And if those are not adhered to, seek indemnification. On additional resources, of course, as we've said in Sharon's presentation, 100% of the funds are now allocated. So to provide additional funds will require a change in those allocations and we would discuss that in executive session.
Okay. Madam CFO?
With the closing of the manager's remarks, I mean, I'm willing to take questions or we can take them in executive session.
Well, wait a minute, but I thought you were going to do the budget.
And then we can go ahead and go to the next, to the next slide as well. Commissioners, we wanted to spend just a few minutes with you today, giving you an update and overview of what it looks like the 2021 budget is sort of building up to. So, so with that, we first wanted to look at where we are in, in 2020 and kind of give you a multi-year view of, of this is all for the general fund, give you a multi-year view of how our revenues and expenditures have looked over the last couple of years. So with, with 2018, we had revenue of 844 million and that included, if I remember correctly, it was like 189 million, close, close to that number of carried forward from 2017, from the 2017 tax billing cycle that had a due date in 2018. We had expenses that year of 642 million and we ended the year with 176 million in fund balance. In 2019, we had revenues of 723 million, expenses of 694 million, and we ended the year with 205 million in fund balance. In 2020, we are currently projecting revenues of about 669 million. And that assumes that there will be a reduction in our collection rate at the end of the year for two reasons. One is the overall impact of the economy due to the, the pandemic. And then secondly, tax bills going out a little later than originally anticipated this year. We're looking at expenses of around 721 million. And so that would leave us with the projected fund balance of about 153 million. On the right-hand side of the slide, we're, we're showing you where we were with our adopted budget of 782 million and how the spending controls and other projected underruns are playing into our current projected expenditures of 721 million. So we have 49 million that were set aside under spending controls and about 12 million that have been generated in other underruns through the course of the year. Next slide, please. So moving into our thought process around what the 2021 budget may actually look like, we've kind of built out three different scenarios. Scenario one is a scenario that assumes we have a revenue neutral relative rate and no growth in the digest, so really no, no new revenues. And the result of that is a revenue number of around 708 million dollars. When we take that and the fund balance that we're carrying forward from 2020 and we consider the current board policy for a 16.67% fund balance reserve, we would be looking at having about 738 million as our expense footprint for the 2021 budget. So that's that pink column in, in the scenario one. In scenario two, we, we take the same beginning fund balance position. And in this scenario, we've made an assumption that we will have, we will experience a contraction in our revenue of about 5%, but which correlates to the digest contracting as a result of the pandemic's impact on primarily the commercial digest and a component of the commercial digest. In this scenario, if we were to maintain the board's fund balance reserve policy of 16.67%, then the expenditure footprint that we would be looking at is 715 million. And that would leave us with 119 million in a fund balance reserve. In scenario three, which is a continuation of the revenue assumptions in scenario two, along with maintaining the higher spending level from scenario one of 738 million. In that scenario, we would actually not be able to maintain our fund balance reserve position. And instead, we would have about 96 million in fund balance reserve. So we would be a little more than 25 million shy of our 16.67% reserve. Next slide. So what, what would, what would that budget structure look like? In 2021, under the scenario one with the 738 million as a total footprint, total expenditure footprint, we're looking at a base budget of about 711 million. So that would give us about 27 million to allocate to, towards items that are not considered part of our base spending. And on the right-hand side of the slide, we've tried to lay out what would actually be included in a $700 million base budget figure. And just running, running through the list, that would fund all current recurring field positions. It would fund all current recurring operating budget. It would fund the debt service requirements for the three tranches of the FERCura bonds. It would allow us to set aside 5.4 million towards our annual capital needs. We would be able to fund the recurring costs that are associated with our increased cyber security position as well as the recurring costs associated with our IT infrastructure improvements, our ongoing IT infrastructure improvements. It would also provide for all the debt service related to the expansion of the surgical center for the Fulton de Cab Hospital Authority. We expect to see some pension, defined benefit pension contribution increases in the, the next budget cycle, so it would provide for, for that as well as any healthcare increases that may, that may result. We have the NAF Care contract that has the step up in its obligation each year, so this would cover that step up as well as an incremental cost for the Elections Department of $3 million. And that would fund in part residual costs associated with finishing out the 2020 election cycle and the one election cycle that is expected to occur in January of 2021. Next slide. So with the 27 million that we would have available between the, the, the broader footprint of 738 and what we've identified as the base budget, we looked at the, the, the magnitude of items that we were aware of that would not be included in that base budget and that we would need to make decisions around allocation of the 27 million. And so that list totals 68.9 million and we, we've broken it out into personnel, personnel and operation-related costs. 35.5 related to personnel, which includes 15 million of funding for current funded vacant positions that are funded into 2020 budget. 10 million for funding for the ICS and Chambers Pay Plan. 10 million for pay-for-performance as well as half a million for the educational incentive program that we have been working on implementing. On the operational side of the House, it would not include 10 million for virtual, our virtual environment and infrastructure improvements. It would not include 8.4 million of non-recurring enhancements that were included in the 2020 budget. And then we identified 15 million as a potential set aside for emergency response and risk mitigation in the 2021 budget. So we would have that 68.9 million of items to consider against the 27 million. And then the last slide is just what the tentative schedule looks like right now. Today, we're presenting you with the, the, the budget footprint. On the 4th, we would plan to open our budget systems for departmental review and input. Close it on the 25th. Begin our development of the proposed budget through the 28th. I mean, on the 28th of September, that would run through November 13th, which is when we would expect to submit the proposed budget to the board. At the board meeting on November the 18th, we would make our formal presentation. We recommend having a budget work session and review at the board meeting on December the 2nd. And then on the 16th, we would hold our required, legally required public hearing, which would then allow us to adopt a budget at either the first or second meeting in January of 2021. And with that, we'll take any questions that you have on, I guess, the CARES Fund update or the budget, the budget update.
All right, the floor is open for questions or comments.
I have a few.
Bruce DeCarnes?
Thank you. Well, looking, looking at the presentation and Sharon, thank you for that presentation. I guess a lot of us are worried about, you know, how things are going to look in terms of an outlook. You know, I, I've seen a lot of budgets and, you know, I guess you, you, you put it together based on the suppositions and assumptions of what's coming. I know we budget very, very conservatively, which is usually not a bad idea, but, uh, you know, every scenario you've given us has been a negative budget scenario in terms of less revenue coming in. I'm not so sure about that necessarily, you know. I think we'll have significant growth in our tax digest. You know, according to the realtors and outfits that I deal with, more folks are, are looking for more house for the money. Folks are moving out of our crowded urban areas throughout the US. A lot of these folks will probably be coming to Metro Atlanta and are coming to Metro Atlanta as we speak. So, you know, I think we'll be over 700 million plus for our digest. And Sharon, if you can remind the public one more time, what percentage of our digest is commercial compared to residential?
Commissioner Carn, I, off of the top of my head, I think that the commercial digest is about 40, maybe a little more than 40% of the total, the total digest. I would have to go back and validate that.
Okay, I, I thought it was a bit less than that, but obviously you're going to know much better than I do. You know, like I said, each budget scenario does lowball our revenue. But, uh, again, that's assuming we're going to be that low. And again, it's great to be conservative, but at the same time, I think we need to fund these departments in the way they need to be funded. And, uh, I mean, I get the direction, you know, freezing everything, obviously. No new hires, we're in the middle of a pandemic, we don't know what's going to happen next. Understandable. But, uh, I'd like us to, I'd like to see a scenario, Sharon, at, at, at a little less than current levels, at least over the $700 million mark in revenues, because that is a realistic possibility that we will be over 700. Unless you're absolutely 100% sure we're going to be down here in the, in the 600 millions, up to 600 millions.
Commissioner Card, we, we will be working on our revenue projections through the remainder really of this year. As it stands right now, we still do not have the tax billing amount for 2020. That'll be the first thing that will trigger a change in our projections is to see, you know, what the current year digest actually generates in, in tax billings. I, I can tell you that we have had conversations with Mr. Robinson around the expected impact in in January of next year on the digest as a result of the pandemic. And there is a, a section of the commercial digest that is expected to have some impact. The value, I mean, the, the vault, well, the magnitude, I guess, of that impact will, will really depend on what happens between now and the end of the year as far as some of those, those areas' ability to those areas ability to actually produce revenue. So hotels, anything that's tied to hotels, restaurants, tourism right now will be significantly impacted. Residential, it is 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 fine at the moment. So the the most significant and part of the impact will come on the commercial side of the digest. So we will continue to monitor that and we will continue to update. The starting point that we're at right now is based on the information that we have to work with now as well as kind of looking back at previous years when we've had an economic either recession or some other economic factor to consider as well as the timing of the tax bills. So we're looking at all of it and we'll continue to monitor monitor it through the end of the year.
And I appreciate that. And I agree with you. I mean, the 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 commercial tax, it's gonna be big. I mean, we're hospitality county over in College Park, East Point, Haightville. Obviously, their hotel motel tax, mixed drink tax revenues are down in in some cases to a tenth of what they were receiving last year. So I mean, it's gonna be a big hit. I do, I don't disagree there, but I always would like to see one scenario where we're looking looking a little bit better, hopefully. So I appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Chris Arrington, followed by Commissioner Hall.
Uh, yes, thank you, Sharon. Um, I just wanted to ask, and I know we've had a lot going on. Seems like I remember last year we passed a resolution to for a mid-year budget. And I was wondering if to do to prepare a mid-year budget annually. And, um, you know, just wanted to get your ideas on when you thought we might be able to do that for this year.
Commissioner Arrington, typically when we are prepared to do an actual mid-year review with the board is once we have the tax billing information, because that's the point in time that we have the real picture for the current year revenue. With with this year in particular, I I would say that could be the first of October, middle of October, before we would have that information. So I'm not, I'm not sure that doing a repurposing of funds at the end of the year would allow enough time to 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 act on it. But, you know, we're I'm willing to bring, I'm willing to bring something back to the board once we get once we get the the revenue picture, the biggest part of our revenue picture set when we receive the tax billing information.
All right, Madam County Attorney, maybe you could resend everyone that resolution. I think if my memory is certainly correct, we just passed it last year and I don't know what what the terms of it were or not.
We will, we will look into it, Commissioner Vice Chairman, and we'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I want to go back, though, to page thirty four, which is the CARES Fund update. And because there's a section that I noticed called coordination. And in that section, it says, plan monthly and or quarterly mayor meetings on COVID response transit water and sewer. Continued inclusion of cities and weekly incident command coordination and stakeholder call with emergency management and add city managers to the twice a week area command coordination call with emergency management. And I'm just trying to figure out where does the where does it fit in for us to communicate the way that they asked us to when we had the special call meeting on Friday, because the outcry from the majority, or I should say all of them, was that moving forward, we really meet with them as far as the Board of Commissioners to address a lot of things that they want to talk to us about, or they want us to update us on. So is that in here in some manner? And I'm just not pulling it out? Or is that some separate coordination that is gonna be done?
Let me, let me attempt to address that one in a conversation that I and the manager and the chief operating officer had with the mayors of follow-up meeting. I suggested to them.
I'm sorry. Hold, wait a minute. There was a follow-up meeting after the special call meeting?
Yes.
Was that communicated to the Board of Commissioners? Because I I didn't see anything.
No, I I to, I call the, I was asked to work through the not the president, I'm not sure what the title is, Mayor Barker, representing the North May, North, North County mayors and Mayor Reed, representing the South County mayors. They wanted us to talk with them again. And I want, and I called them to make sure that I understood and that the manager understood the issues that they were concerned about. That's where the four issues came from that the manager spoke about earlier, which we will be talking about in executive session. And the easiest one to fix, though, is the communication one. And I said, listen, why don't we consider this? I want, this is another matter for executive session. But since you brought it up, I said, I will commit to make myself available. I can commit the manager to make himself available and the chief operating officer. And we'll talk to the other commissioners at an executive session on Wednesday, which will be coming up shortly. And I said, let's look at weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, or quarterly. And the two mayors were going to talk with the other mayors to determine which they prefer. And the feedback that I got from the managers that they were thinking at this time that a monthly would be adequate them at this point in time. But we would be assuming if there were new developments, we could be meet and talk more frequently than on a monthly basis basis. I also suggested to them that that the board would decide which, but I think it would be appropriate to let them decide when, how frequently they want to be updated. But I also said that what we'll also do quickly, easily is to provide them, and all, everything we're talking about is public anyway, even this meeting. So they're all free to watch it. But that they would be provided an agenda on Friday, just as each commissioner is provided an agenda of an upcoming board meeting, as well as the verbatim minutes of the meeting. And the clerk has been directed to provide those two items to the mayors as well. So that's where we are. And I wanted to go into more detail in the executive session.
All right, thank you for that. And and I want to commend and thank Commissioner Arrington for something that he did a while ago as it relates to that that I heard come up in Sharon's presentation. But if if you, if everyone recalls, there was a a resolution number twenty dash zero zero seven eight that Commissioner Arrington brought forward. And it was that Fulton County Code relating to reserve balances for Fulton County budgets to be lowered to lower the general fund minimum reserve balance. And it it looks like he was basically right on what he was trying to do. So thank you, Commissioner Arrington, because it looks like we're we're that it might be a necessary move. And also, I want to address when I, when Sharon went over page thirty six and she said that through the multi-year view that the projection for 2020 was an in-ending fund balance of one hundred and fifty-three million. That addresses a lot of of questions about what do we expect that the money's gonna look like at the end of the year? And then also her what she said about 2021 and the availability of twenty seven million to be allocated to other places. So I'm really glad to see that. Thank you, Sharon. But out of that, my question is, when will we be seeing the departmental budget hearings scheduled? And can you make sure that it's communicated to us and our teams, our staff, when those budget hearings are gonna take place so that we can attend or designate staff to attend?
Commissioner Hall, currently, we don't have a plan for departmental budget hearings this year as we had some discussion around the development of the budget, the the pandemic and the bringing together of of groups of of people. We we felt like our approach would be to have the chief operating officers work with each of their departments directly on their budget development and to let issues be brought forward through those chief operating officers. So as it stands today, we had not planned to have a large-scale departmental hearings. In the last couple of years, we've been having our work stack operational stack sessions. And and so we felt like under the circumstances this year that we might need to take a different approach with 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 that. So the departments will be able to submit their requests starting tomorrow, I mean, on the fourth, starting Friday. And and then the COOs would be working with each department to to sort of facilitate their questions around the budget and look at at any of their issues, very much like what they're already doing right now as we are are in the posture that we're in now. All like, for example, Alton has been very instrumental in working with the justice system in evaluating and bringing forward all of their operational issues as we went into the remote posture that we're in and as we continue to operate under the governor's executive orders as well as the judicial orders that have been issued as well. I don't know, Dick, if you want to add anything to that or not.
No, I mean, I think the, in addition to the COVID overlay to this process, it's just the practical of looking at, unless we get a different direction from the board in terms of what to assume or our forecast change, right now, we're looking at, as you could see from page thirty eight and thirty nine, you know, precious little to allocate beyond what's in the space budget. And some, if you're just talking about vacant positions or pay raises, that in and of itself would eat up the twenty seven million. So I'm not sure that it would be very productive beyond what Sharon described, which is trying to identify the the must-dos, I'll say, out of each one of the departments to have a complete set of presentations done that in that no scenario that we've outlined could satisfy.
Okay, so, um, well, to go back to the departmental budget hearings. So I think it's probably easier than ever before to actually do these departmental budget hearings because of the technology that we're all using to come together as we are doing this huge Board of Commissioners meeting. So I don't see where the difficulty is in actually continuing to do what we all have normally done and what has been approved as far as the Board of Commissioners and put in place. They can zoom right in. And with Zoom, you can screen share the same way that you're screen sharing the presentation right now. So I don't, I don't really understand the difficulty that you're speaking of. So the operational stack still would exist. And it would just exist in a manner that's a lot more easier because people don't have to get in their cars and everybody try to drive to a location. They can just log in as we're doing now. And I've seen this in other places as well. I mean, National Association of Counties, ACCG, and so many other places are making everything online so that commissioners from all over the United States can come together and still continue to get their training. Conferences are still being held. So I'd like to to hear more about you moving in that direction so that we can move forward with our budget process the way that we normally have. Mr. County Manager and Madam CFO. Do you think that's something that you could work toward?
I mean, I think our deputy COOs, but again, I think we're not seeing the value in bringing every department together to present what comes over generally a hundred million dollars in requests when we know that our principal focus has to be on maintaining current staffing levels, making a few key choices to add to that. It seems, you know, not only counterproductive, but maybe quite disappointing to the departments to bring forward a lot of work, make their presentations, knowing that the financial envelope that we have to work within is insufficient to satisfy that. Unless the board makes a decision to release the reserve in an amount that would give us the ability to satisfy those requests. So if the board did that, I would say that then there's the, you know, there's the benefit of bringing everyone together. If the board does not do that, given these financial views, unless they change dramatically, and I don't suspect that they will, there is not a productive use of time to have them do that.
Okay, well, let me, let me explain to you what what's important about it. The most important part about it is that as the Board of Commissioners, who we are charged to approve a budget at the end of the day, regardless of who has convened and gone over it and all that, we have to approve that budget. And we have to approve that budget knowing everything about the budget to make our final decision on whether or not we want to approve it or not. We have to have some premise or basis of why we are approving it or not approving it. So I think it's important for us as commissioners to hear every aspect of the budget process. And then also, because there was an issue last year that was raised about departments saying that information was not being passed along, that it was stopping at some point before it even got to the commissioners. I think that would resolve that from happening in the future if we just do our budget hearings like we're, like we've always intended to do and like we did, we've done over the past several years. And so we can eliminate all of those issues. Everybody knows what's going on. It's transparency at its best, open honest government at its best, and it eliminates a lot of that headache. And I have a question about, to Sharon, you know, what is the mechanism gonna be for departments to request emergency approval to fill the critical vacancies now and in 2021, in the 2021 budget?
Commissioner Hall. As it stands right now, departments have been submitting their requests to Human Resources. And they've been vetted, or they are being vetted. And we're considering those after HR has vetted them. And they're brought to, we have a Um, and they're brought to, uh, we have a, pretty much have a, a, a call every morning at nine AM. And uh, Mr. Herman brings items forward in that call and we're, where we discuss them and we will approve them. Again, um, the deputy COOs have been instrumental in that process as well as far as accumulating requests. We have some requests, uh, we have received some requests from the justice system that have been considered. And various other departments have submitted theirs directly to HR. So that's the process that we're using now. In 2021, um, depending on what happens with the budget, the positions that are funded in the budget, you know, unless something extraordinary happens shortly after the budget gets approved next year, um, we would allow departments to fill um, the positions that are funded and included in their 2021 budget.
Okay, great. Thank you for answering that. Cause you know, especially when there's attrition and filling positions won't increase the annual expenditure. We needed to address that. So um, I'm looking forward to, when do you think you can let um, me know and any of my colleagues who may want to know as well um, about the departmental budget hearing?
I guess we will, some further discussion about that internally and make a decision on how we may approach that.
All right. Thank you so much.
Great. Other comments or questions? Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ellis.
Yeah, just one comment. I appreciate the budget context and I just wanted to go on record that, you know, we did modify our budget development process a couple of years ago via resolution and, you know, kind of gave, you know, kind of control of that process to uh, the manager and I appreciate the context in which he's sort of made the remarks around um, utility of, you know, kind of these line by lines or a departmental, you know, budget um, things and whether that's, and they don't really feel like that's gonna be productive. So I don't necessarily agree that um, that's a process that uh, you know, we should, we, we should be going back to for purposes of a 2021 budget. So I do think, just want to go on record, I think that there may not be a full, full level of consensus around that. So as you develop your thinking on that, bring it back to us. So that's all.
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Ellis, because I want to be clear that I'd never asked for a line by line. What I'm asking for is the budget presentation that the departments provide. I don't need, I don't need a line by line. I didn't request a line by line.
Yeah, and I mean, speaking to the process that the county manager suggested they want to move forward with it. I'm in support of that. They feel like that's the best process for 2021.
Anyone else at this time? All right. Thank you, Madam CEO, Madam CFO, Mr. Manager. Let's take this next item. So Dr. uh, not Rochelle, Paxton, you go back to work.
Okay, on page eleven, two zero dash zero six two two, sponsored by Chairman Pitts, request approval of a resolution in support of the continuing transition of the Fulton County Board of Health.
All right, Madam uh, County Attorney, would you explain what this is limited to and what's before us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, at the last board meeting, I was not here and there was a lot of uh, concern from Commissioner Hall, especially and rightly so, about the differences between the versions of the resolution and admissions and the resolutions of the language that had been there before with regards to the fact that we have entered to an agreement to memorialize the um, the changes that you are, we're going to adopt. So the version of the um, resolution before you contains only financial control transferring dates and those dates have been changed slightly because one data was originally uh, September first and that is changed as well as we incorporated that missing paragraph, Commissioner Hall, that was there that gave us the ability to um, do an amendment to the agreements uh, to memorialize these changes. Everything else remains the same and it's just a financial control over their funds.
Okay, so I'll move approval again.
I'll second.
Question.
Okay, uh, properly moved and seconded. Commissioner Hall has a question and uh, Mr. Harden and Dr. Paxton.
And I've got my hand raised, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hall, follow back to Mr. Arrington. Mr. Hall.
Commissioner Carron, what did you say?
I said, I have a question as well after all the other questions.
Mr. Hall.
Okay.
Mr. Hall, Mr. Arrington, Mr. Carron.
All right. Um, so first um, thing, this resolution had a previous resolution number of twenty dash zero four nine zero. And now it has a resolution number of twenty dash zero six two two. Can somebody explain to me? How did the resolution number change? Why? And is that proper for it to change in uh, during the process of it coming before the board, back and forth before the board? What, what is going on?
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Hall, um, the board has um, an agenda rule that was adopted by the board and incorporated into the clerk's office, you know, roster of all of the rules or procedural rules for the meetings. And under Rule Six, it says that if a matter is held three times, then the clerk has the authority to remove that particular commissioner's item because it hasn't been voted up and hasn't been voted down. As a result, any resolution um, has to be resubmitted and resubmitted with a new number after that third hold.
Okay, can you send that to me, please?
Yes, I can get, I, I, I can get, yes, we can get it to you. Yes, ma'am, I can send it to you from where I am right now. Yes, I can get it to you.
Yes, thank you. And then um, so I was noticing that what we've been sent now is complete, it has a lot of changes compared to what we had before. And does anyone have, uh, can anyone identify those changes that have been made because it's a little hard to go through the last couple of phases of this and figure out what all has changed? Did anyone keep track of these changes as we were going along? As we have been going along, I mean?
No, we don't keep track of the changes because at, the, the changes arose as a result of Board of Commissioners comments and discussions. And so the only thing I can tell you, the major change is everything related to everything else other than um, finance was deleted from the initial version as well as the dates were changed. Because remember, the initial version had IT, um, HR, purchasing and financial controls being transferred over. And that a concern was raised during the first time it was presented about all of that being uh, covered at this point in time. And really what we needed to focus that on was finance. So we submitted a new version with just finance controls in it, and then it had some inconsistencies with regard to dates, timing, ability of the department to do certain things. And so at the second time, it was held again for some clarification. The third meeting, I was out of town and somehow another, a document was presented differently than what it should have been. And you asked several questions about the language that we were quoting in there and mentioned that there were inconsistencies in the documents. So that's why this document does just reflect financial controls with the ability of the county attorney to work through um, an amendment to the two documents that were referenced.
That was a mouthful. So um, so you mentioned a lot in what you just said that has changed, but what, one thing I caught in particular was deletions. And um, and because you don't have anything to show us the variations between these documents, um, I'm gonna ask you if you could at least let us know what deletions took place. But I have recalled on numerous occasions where we've gone through several iterations of um, resolutions and other things and my colleagues and I requesting that you put, that people, please don't bring us new documents that have changed so many times without indicating to us what those changes have been that have taken place because it's really hard to keep up with. So can you at least go over what were the deletions that took place? And any additions that took place? That changed this document?
Yeah. Commissioner Hall, I hate to tell you, but because this is a new matter and I have before me the previous version, all I have is the new version and I did cover some, some, or what changed, but I don't have a line, red line. The actual document that was previously discussed the last meeting.
Wait, somebody is not, somebody is not muted and I can't, I couldn't hear what Patrice was saying. Patrice, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear what you were saying because somebody else was talking.
Well, I do not have the ability to do what you need to, to, that you just asked for because I do not have the previous version that had a different item number. And I don't have a comparison of line by line that, that document with this new one. So I don't have the ability today to do that. If I had the other one in my file, I would be glad to do that, but I don't have that.
Dr. Paxton, are you on the line? So with us?
Yes, I am, and as is Chairman Harden.
As Dr. Paxton, Chairman Harden, are you able to uh, provide some clarity for Commissioner Hall? It's pretty straightforward.
I don't want to waste their time with that because I would prefer that our own county attorney tell me because the document went through the county attorney's office, did it not? Or did it go through Dr. Paxton and, and uh, Mr. Harden before it came to us?
It did go to Dr. Harden and, I mean, Dr. Excuse me, Mr. Attorney Harden and Dr. Paxton. But I, I do know that.
And you didn't, and your office didn't have the final uh, review of it before it came to the Board of Commissioners?
We did have the final review of the new resolution. Yes.
Okay, okay. Whoo, all right. I was, I was about to.
Comparison. I don't have a comparison of the changes.
Okay, so I want to put in a substitute motion that we hold this until the county attorney's office can come back and give us a full overview of all the changes that have taken place that have led us to this new resolution, six two two, this is not four nine oh anymore, is six two two. And there have been a lot of changes in here. I was trying to track the changes myself and I don't trust that I'm gonna cover them all because I'm not an attorney. I rely on our county attorney for that type of input, especially because this document has to be reviewed by the county attorney's office before it gets to us and gets on this agenda. So um, I'm, I'm putting forward a substitute motion to hold it so we can at least get that information so we can make a a very well-informed decision before we make a vote.
Second. Properly moved and seconded to, to hold. Commissioner Eric, do you still want to be heard?
Uh, yes, just to voice one of the other reasons that I believe it needs to be held. Um, I don't believe that the statement is true that this resolution only deals with financial controls. In fact, I know it's not true. It's absolutely inaccurate. Ms. Whitmore, we're talking about ten point four million dollars. Is that correct?
Ms. Whitmore? Is she in the other room?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Vice, Mr. Vice Chairman, and uh, ten point four million in county contribution.
Okay, and how much of that ten point four covers employees' salaries?
Hakeem, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, good afternoon. Oh, okay. Good afternoon, um, Vice Chair. Uh, based on the information, uh, based on the information that we have available to us, um, currently they have about uh, one hundred and thirty-eight positions being um, paid out of a general fund and uh, it is for a total of ten point one million dollars.
So ten point one of the ten point four deals with employee salaries. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
So how could this just be limited to financial if ninety-seven percent of it is employee salaries? We, we're not being honest. Until y'all can be honest, none of this is gonna happen. So if you're talking about three hundred thousand dollars of administrative dollars, I'm fine. They can have that all up front. But it makes no sense. It is absolutely illogical that we would pay ten point one million dollars to the Board of Health while maintaining the responsibility to actually pay our own employees. That is basically a twenty million dollar swing. Why would we pay them ten million dollars and still have to pay our employees ten million dollars? That makes no sense. Who in the world is recommending that we do that? And why would they recommend such? We've already said that we're keeping the employees. The only, the only way that would make sense is if we were going to transfer the employees to them. But we've already said we're keeping the employees. So why would we transfer the money that goes to their salaries? Why would we transfer ten point one million dollars out of ten point four and still maintain the responsibility of having to pay those employees? So if we transfer the ten and we pay the ten, that's twenty million dollars. Is that right, Ms. Whitmore?
Uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, yes, we would maintain the obligation to pay the employees while we would also um, need to make the contribution to the Board of Health to await the reimbursement for the payment of the employees.
Where, eh, where else in the history of the world has somebody ever done that? Name me one time, one incident where someone will pay ten million dollars to another independent party and still have to pay that ten million dollars to their employees. Just cite one previous incident ever in the history of the world. It's never been done. It doesn't make sense. It's illogical that we would pay ten million dollars and still have to pay that same two million dollars to ourselves. Now, if they want the three hundred thousand dollars that's over the ten point one that we have to pay for employees, then I'm all in support of giving them that three hundred thousand upfront. But it makes no sense in the world. And if anyone there, Dr. Harden, Mr. Harden, Dr. Paxton, Commissioner Pitts, if any of you can explain how in the world you think it would make sense for us to pay ten point one million and still have to pay our employees ten point one million?
Chairman.
Then I would love to hear the answer.
Commissioner Eric, can I correct a basic misunderstanding? We are not proposing that there should be double payments for this. Uh, I mean, you're, you're assuming if I'm getting, if I'm understanding what you're saying, you're assuming that Fulton County would give us ten million dollars and then they would take another ten million dollars to pay for the employees. No, that is not what is being proposed here. And perhaps Sharon could better explain this to, you know, Hakeem, how this would, how this would work. But we're not, it's not a proposal that there should be basically double payment for this. So Sharon?
Well, well, it, it doesn't, I mean, the two are mutually exclusive. We can't loan you the ten point one million and still have to pay our employees the ten point one million without it equalling twenty million. Now, I understand that there are gonna be reimbursement coming, coming back. But again, to me, the only way that makes sense is if we were actually transferring the employees, which was the original language from the original bill. If we were transferring the employees, then it would make sense to transfer their salaries. But we're not transferring the employees. So why on God's green earth would we transfer their salaries?
Okay.
Hello?
I, I don't think they have another, uh, anything else to, 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 to add, uh, Vice Chair.
Okay, well, I don't know. I'm, I, you know, I assume they can speak for themselves. Okay, well, I don't know, I, you know, I assume they can speak for themselves and if they have an answer, they can say whether they do or they don't.
Okay.
But if we're going to hold it, then that's fine, but I have no problem giving them the three hundred thousand dollars over the employee amount. But I have no idea how anyone could possibly justify that we would pay ten million dollars to somebody else and still maintain the responsibility of paying our employees. It's, it's absolutely illogical.
Okay, Vice Chair, Juris Karin, do you still want to be heard?
Just real quick, I guess I, I need a little clarity on this, I, you know. We had a good meeting with Jack and, and Dr. Paxton. The gist that I gathered is that I understand that the Board of Health wants control over their budget so they can make the decisions in terms of their budget to expedite some of the health needs for the county. Now, that makes a good sense. I understand that you, you all were telling me that you got some a lot of red tape that you have to go through, a lot of hoops that you have to jump through doing your budget process the way we've been doing it thus far, you wanted the freedom to, 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 to utilize your funds as you see fit. I understand that. Now I'm hearing, so Sharon, again, if you could clarify something for me, I want to make sure I'm understanding this. Ten point four million dollars is their budget, is that right?
Ten point four million dollars is what we budget in the general fund as a contribution to the Board.
That's our contribution to their budget.
That's our contribution. And ten point one of our contribution is, is staff, is that, is that what you're saying, Sharon, is that?
Ten point, yes, or ten point one of it goes towards the salary and fringe benefit cost.
Okay. They want control of their own budget, understood. In terms of the staff portion of the budget, the ten point one million, is that money movable in any other budgets? Can they take that money and next, and, and, and for expenditures outside of staffing? Or is that money restricted, like in most departments, the, the staffing budget is restricted funds and can't be commingled with your, your other funds that you have more, more latitude with, is that right?
So Commissioner Karin, that's a, that's a very difficult question to answer because the total Board of Health's budget is over thirty million dollars.
I guess I'm only speaking to our ten point four and the ten point one out of our ten point, point four allotment that we give them. Is that all staffing money?
So, so our ten point four is contributed to the Board of Health and it's commingled then with the money they receive from the state and fees that they generate. And collectively together, it's all used to support either salary and fringe benefits or their operating costs.
I got you. I hear a ten point four number and a ten point one million dollar number from Fulton County. The ten point one million I thought I heard went towards salaries only, is, is that correct or incorrect?
Yes, ten point one, ten point one is the value of the one hundred and thirty eight positions.
Okay.
You know, for salaries and benefits.
So, so out of, out of the ten point four we give them, Sharon, is ten point one restricted to salaries or not?
They pull their funds to get a commission, they pull the funds, you know, they use funds from the or from the grant aid. So they have a total of thirty eight million dollars. Always saying that, you know, the value of all the positions, the one thirty eight position that they have for their fund is the ten point one.
Okay. Okay, let, let me ask it another way. We, we allocated ten point four million dollars Fulton County. What, what's the breakdown of our allocation? What has it been traditionally? Out of that, the ten point four million that we've allocated, how have we broken that down to the Board of Health? Has it been ten point ones and salaries and the rest towards whatever else or not?
For, for the most part, Commissioner Karin, it's used to support salaries and fringe benefits.
Okay, so that, that money's not movable, that money's not, not fungible, that, that, that money they can't put in, 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 in another column anyway, or, or spend it on whatever projects they want to spend it on, that's salary money. Okay, all right, I mean, i- i- if, if, if that's the case, then there's no latitude with that ten point one anyhow, if it's going to salaries. And now, I, I, now, and I know I didn't hear right, we, we're not, we wouldn't actually pay ten million twice theoretically, would we? Sharon, or, or, or is the Board of Health, they're not technically asking for a loan of an additional ten million, that, that's not what, what's happening, is it?
If, if I may, Commissioner Karin, the county pays one hundred percent of all of the employees' costs that are assigned to the Board of Health. We pay that for what has historically been considered county-funded positions and we pay that for physicians that are ultimately funded by a grant. So we pay first, they're our employees, they work, we pay their salary, we incur that cost. We incur that cost for over, I think it's three hundred, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty positions roughly, so we incur those costs first. We do that out of a separate contractual services fund. Then the Board of Health is billed by us, we bill the Board of Health for those costs. They incur the expense in reimbursing us. Then they in turn are able to submit costs to the state of Georgia to reimburse them for the grant-funded physicians. So I've said this a couple of times, it's very, it's very complex.
Okay, I, I'm completely, I'm completely lost.
I think this may help you. We have a relationship with another entity and that entity is given, is given a grant, basically funds by your, our board every year. That money is not designated for a particular purpose. It happens to correlate with the salaries of certain Fulton County employees. But the money is given to the Board of Health, all of their money is in an account that they have. What happens is they reimburse the county for salary costs and any other expenses that the county pays, but it comes from monies, not a designated ten point four for salaries. It's money given to them.
Okay, okay, so somebody from our staff conveyed to, to this Board of Commissioners that ten point one of their budget was salary and the remainder was other. So I don't know who conveyed that, but that was my understanding.
Right, that, this is Beverly Stanley, the District Administrator for Fulton County Board of Health. And it's like Patrice said, the county allocated ten point four million to the Board of Health for operating and salaries and benefits.
I just want the percentage breakdown of that. What's the percentage breakdown of those two numbers? That, 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 that's what I want to know.
Well, and, and it's like Sharon said, it's very complicated because the monies are commingled.
I, I just, hold, man, 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 I just need, I just need, you, you, he, hear me out. All I need is the breakdown of those two budgetary items. What's the percentage of salary, what's the percentage of other, that's all I need.
Anybody have a calculator handy? I can do it in my head, but anybody have a calculator?
Simple question.
It's ten point one and three hundred thousand, that's what it is.
No, 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 the ten point four is allocated to the Board of Health for operating expenditures and salaries and personnel. In addition to that, our revenue, six million dollars, is in that same category of funds for a total of sixteen million dollars for operating and salaries and benefits for those positions that are county-funded positions. It's not just the ten point four or ten point one is not just for salaries and benefits.
Okay, I don't want to commingle anyone else's money in additional six million. So there's never been a breakdown of our ten point four million dollar contribution to the Board of Health, there's no, that's not on the sheet somewhere where I can see.
There is a break, we have a budget.
All right, Commissioners, let's do this. Commissioners, let's do this in the interest of time because there are two hard stops today, we have a lot to cover. There's a motion on the floor to hold. Now, Dr. Paxton, anything else you want to add before we vote, or Mr. Harden? Yeah, no? All right, Madam Clerk.
Can you repeat what you said, I'm sorry?
Sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
I said, there's a motion on the floor to hold and I was asking, whoever, I said whoever, there's a lot to go on the agenda today. But a couple of us have hard stops. So I wanted to dispose of this motion. Right now, I was asking, Mr. Harden or Dr. Paxton, if they wanted to add anything before the vote that would be relevant.
I do not have anything, but I think Mr. Harden does.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no, I, I simply support this resolution, the main resolution. And I think the Board understands that the Board of Health favors the steps that are in the proposed resolution. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, let's vote on the motion to hold. And, and we're holding, Commissioner.
Wait, can I ask a question? Because you know, Hakeem had provided something to us, it was a chart that actually showed the purpose of the funding and everything. Hakeem, do you still have that chart? Can you just send that to us? So that we can see it, because you had all the details in there. Just wanted to ask for that.
Yep, can you provide that, Commissioner, not Commissioner? Can you provide that to all of us? If this is held, we'll have time to go into it in a little more detail. All right, Madam Clerk.
Over two weeks ago, everyone already has it. It showed ten point four with ten point one going to employee salaries and three hundred thousand dollars over there. Everybody already has it, everybody was.
I agree, Vice.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair.
Madam Clerk, call her all, the motion to hold, please. I'm ready for it, all right, Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
No.
Commissioner Morris?
No.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Arrington?
Yes.
Mr. Karin?
Yes.
I vote no.
The motion passes.
Motion is held, all right. Let us entertain a motion to recess for lunch and executive session, we do have a lot to cover including possible litigation, personnel and real estate, so. Second, Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Morris? Commissioner Hall? Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Karin?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Welcome back Commissioners, we're going to do a roll call, please. Chairman Rockdick?
President.
Commissioner Liz Hausman?
Present.
Commissioner Bob Allen? Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Lee Morris? Commissioner Natalie Hall?
Present.
Vice Chairman Marvin, Marvin Arrington Jr. And Commissioner Joe Karin?
Present.
Miss Chairman, you have the call.
Okay, Madam County Attorney?
Yes.
Without objection, we will resume the regular order of business. Vice Chair?
Commissioner.
I'm here, I'm here.
Go ahead.
All right, the, I think I need a motion to approve the representation request and I discussed the item number one.
All right, properly moved and seconded, let's vote, please, Commissioner Hausman? Commissioner Hausman? Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
She was trying to unmute, she, but.
Commissioner Hausman, you with us?
I could see her mouth moving, but nothing is coming through the speaker.
Yeah.
IT?
It says I'm unmuted.
There you go.
All right, let's start again. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris? He's gone, Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Mr. Karin?
Yes.
And I vote yes, Madam Clerk.
The motion passes, six A, zero N.
And I'd like to have a motion to reject a settlement offer discussed in item number two.
I'll second. All right, let's vote, Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris? Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Karin?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
The motion passes, six A, zero N.
And I'd like to have a motion to approve the settlement authority issued in item number three.
Motion.
All right, I'll second, let's vote, please, Commissioner Hausman? Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Mr. Karin?
Yes.
I vote yes.
The motion passes, five A, zero.
That's it from executive session.
All right, that's it from executive session, all right, continue, Madam Clerk.
Bottle of eight, seven, two zero dash zero six zero eight, request ratification of countywide COVID nineteen emergency procurement.
Is there a motion?
I have a question.
Commissioner Hall?
Okay. Six oh eight.
Six oh seven.
Six oh eight.
I'm sorry, six oh eight.
Okay, I thought so, okay. No problem. Okay, so I have a question because I keep seeing all this purchasing done for registrations and elections. And I'm trying to figure out why are we purchasing for registrations and elections using COVID nineteen funding? How are we justifying it? And because if you go back to even the board meeting before, we were purchasing electrical cables and wires for voting carriers, ballot marking devices and software maintenance support for registrations and elections, precinct tabulators and scanners, printing services for provision voter stations, room rental for poll working, training and for social distancing, compliance, professional services for registrations and elections, call center, printing and mailing of polling locations to head of households, cleaning and sanitation, I can understand, for the twenty two schools. But mailing services, addressing, collating, packing, sorting, vote, vote mailers, two-station vote centers, iPad for registrations and elections. And then the next one for the next meeting was laptops for registrations and elections, polling, location change signage. And if we keep going to this, this one, we have to replace the Ford chassis with a diesel freight liner chassis in order to complete the fabrication of the registrations and elections bus delivery by October. And I'm like, we have a bus? Or is that an abbreviation for something else? But it says it's for a vehicle. So I want to know about the bus that registrations and elections has, and then it has, that's it, so there's so much purchasing done through what's supposed to be COVID nineteen emergency procurement for registration and elections items that I'm, I'm just confused on. Because we had this whole discussion about the definition of what is actually COVID nineteen emergency procurement items and how we're supposed to spend that money. So if somebody could answer that question, because that's a lot of stuff that I would expect would be purchased through the registrations and elections budget.
Okay. Strong Whittaker? Strong Whitaker? Ms. Strong Whitaker?
Felicia is here, but I think Rick Barron is on as well. A lot of this is due to social distancing and purchasing additional equipment for that. But I'll let Rick, I'll defer to Mr. Barron.
Please, because I don't know where electrical cables and wires is going to help with social distancing and ballot marking devices and software maintenance support and printing services. I don't, I don't see how that helps with social distancing and all the other things, twenty-something other things that I named that have been on these lists for the past several board meetings.
Some of these were emergency procurements in the traditional sense of the word, in that they were time-sensitive. Commissioner Hall, and some of them have been recognized by the federal government as being an additional expense for COVID because of the fact they need more machines, more locations, more absentee ballot process.
So I think the problem with that is the fact that the header on this says Fulton County COVID-19 emergency procurements. And that header alone makes everyone, including the public, believe that this is COVID-19-related funding being used for COVID-19-related purchases. And so if this is something that's totally separate from that, I don't think it belongs on this report with this particular heading.
I understand your comment about the caption.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I can start. Commissioner Hall, we, I'm sorry, we were just talking amongst ourselves here that we can submit a separate list for the emergency purchase requests that aren't being funded out of the CARES Act, but that still would meet the requirement for an emergency purchase. And on the elections in particular, we have an item on the agenda today for budget soundings. And I believe that Mr. Barron is going to give an overall update on the election plan for the year as part of that. So you would be able to see what is driving some of the need for the procurement items, for the increased number of polling locations, as well as the additional need for more ballot marking devices because of additional elections that are being added to the schedule this year and some of the requirements for how equipment can be, when the equipment can be used, what timeframe the equipment can be reused from the early voting cycle to the regular election cycle. So all of that is factoring into the need driving some of these procurement items. But to your point specifically about the header, we will make sure that we separate the items that are just a normal emergency purchase from something that we're actually funding out of the COVID funds going forward.
Thank you. So can you break out what has happened? Because I've looked at three BLC meetings where these items are just consistently coming through on this COVID-19 emergency procurement report. So if you can at least start there and separate them so we can honestly see what is what. And I'd like a copy of the change that you just mentioned. And I also want to address what you just brought up about the soundings item. I was a little shocked to see that soundings item because I was actually told that there was no more soundings money left. And so to see that come up and be for registrations and elections was interesting, especially in lieu of the fact that we're having these long discussions about where to find money for the cities to, you know, to rectify the situation with the COVID-19 funding. And then in addition to that, we have an add-on today where registrations and elections is receiving a grant of over six million dollars. So it just seems like we really need to get a handle on all of the funding and the money and where it's going. Because it sounds like registrations and elections is getting enough money to do what they need to do. We don't need to take our soundings to do something else for them. They have an add-on right here that says six point three million dollars in grant funding is coming to them. And this is just, this was added on, I'm assuming, because they just found out about it. So it wouldn't have been added on at the last minute if it wasn't a last-minute thing. So I'm looking forward to having that discussion when we get to the soundings item about that soundings money going to registrations and elections. Thank you, thank you.
Vice Chair. Arrington?
He has to.
Yes, I'm here.
You have to preside, the chairman has left the room.
Okay. All right. Thank Commissioner Hall for those comments. I think it's very important. I'm glad that you stated that. And I know that they will work to get that information out. It's so important that we be accurate in our presentation so that it's not confused. Is it something that we need to vote on?
Need a motion?
Yes, you need a motion to approve the emergency expenditure report.
Okay, so Commissioner Hall, or do you have an amendment to that motion to separate out the items as you discussed for the past?
Absolutely, I'm sorry, yes, absolutely. I'd like to make an amendment that we separate the items. And, but I do want, as I requested, for them to go back to the last three meetings at least and separate the items because there are quite a few items that are specifically registrations and elections.
Commissioner Ellis, do you accept that friendly amendment?
I don't know how you can bifurcate it. I mean, I think it's probably in terms of an ass to go back to get the information, but I don't think you can bifurcate the actual document that's here before us.
That's correct. Yes, it is. You're correct, Commissioner Ellis, she can't get the information going forward correctly, but she can get the information split up for what's happened in the past. But you can't go back and retroactively reflect that in the minutes.
That's fine. I just want the information to be accurate and true. That's all. And I want all of it to be accurate and true, so thank you.
Commissioner Ellis, it sounded like a yes to me, particularly given the attorney's position on that. Was that a yes or no?
You can't bifurcate this particular thing that's before us. There are all emergency procurement requests that need to be approved. But the county attorney said that the document can be, we can supply the information even going back a few meetings to say which of those are, you know, supported by CARES Act funding and which of those are just straight emergency procurements.
Okay, so do you want to just do that right now and finance CFO and whoever else? Need to go ahead and separate what is actually COVID-19 emergency procurement and what is actually just a regular department emergency procurement so that we can be accurate on what we're voting on today?
We're voting on approval of the emergency procurement, so.
I thought of the point, though, Commissioner Ellis, was that some of them were in fact not emergency procurements.
That's correct.
They're all emergency procurements, am I not correct?
That's correct. They're just different funding sources. The Commissioner Hall is correct that the caption just needs to be revised.
Right.
And the different types of emergencies specified. However, they still are emergency procurements, Commissioner, I mean Vice Chairman.
Okay, so I guess, I'm just trying to understand. I think Commissioner Ellis was saying that he's okay with Commissioner Hall's amendment as long as it's restricted as he stated.
To go forward, yes.
Yes. Forward, and there will also be a report coming to divide them up, the past ones.
May I ask a question, please?
Sure.
I don't recall us having a list of emergency procurement pre-COVID. I just assumed that everything that was on this list was COVID-related. And am I hearing differently?
Well, I think that's the problem, as Commissioner Hall was identifying. It looks like there have been, there's been emergency procurements. And however, they've been titled emergency COVID procurement.
But again, in general, I don't recall a whole lot of emergency procurements on a list like this before COVID.
Well, I think the reason is we adopted the, we adopted the thing that allowed the county manager to go forward. And so I think, you know, they were going forward with COVID expenses and then trying to come and get board approval afterwards. So I think the change in our procurement policy due to COVID may have maybe the reason for that.
Right, but the emergency order is not in effect at this time. And we're still.
Well, I don't know that we restricted, I don't recall restricting the county manager's ability to.
Hold on, I want to hear what Commissioner Hausmann was saying. She wasn't finished.
Well, I just, I do think that the paperwork needs to be corrected. And if in fact we're putting two categories of emergency expenses on one document, that needs to be delineated. I'm just stating that I did not, do not recall in the past seeing lists of emergency procurements on a spreadsheet come forward on a regular basis like has been happening since COVID. So I'm very curious what's COVID's expense now versus regular general fund expense because I looked at the document as if it was all COVID. That's my point.
Uh, Commissioner Ellis, I guess, go ahead, Commissioner Hall.
No, I was saying, Sharon, can you answer that, please?
So I was just going to respond to Commissioner Hausmann's comment. Historically, Commissioner Hausmann, we have brought forward the emergency purchases for ratification. Last year, Commissioner Morris had asked us to provide the Board of Commissioners with a communication whenever we did an emergency procurement, which we began to do that last year. And then we would bring those forward to the board at the next available board meeting for ratification. There, so typically those have come to you in the form of a, like a single, a single item in a memo format. But because of the volume of the purchases that we've been doing relative to the pandemic, we've been putting them in this chart form and presenting them to you for ratification at the board meeting in this form. We also are still sending you the memorandum, but the memorandum transmits, basically transmits the same document to you. And so we've been transmitting that to you about every two weeks. And then it shows up on the board's agenda the next meeting after the date of transmission.
All right, but again, you know, I think the point is that we're confused as to what's what, so.
And so we will.
You'll go back and clarify that.
Yes, yes, ma'am. We'll go back and we'll break down our previous emergency purchases into those that were just normal emergency purchases and those that were specifically COVID-related, use of CARES Fund, use of CARES Fund related.
I think that will help with our conversation with the mayors when they look at a list like this and they think it's all coming from COVID funds.
That's right.
It's confusing.
Uh, so Commissioner. What is your pleasure? I'm sorry, who was that? Who else was that that wanted to speak?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Arrington, it was probably me. I was just simply going to say that we did set aside some of the COVID funds to address some of the election needs as well, particularly those that were tied to the need to provide for social distancing and barrier protection and things like that.
So for moving forward, Commissioner Ellis, are you fine with, I guess, the friendly amendment that will allow staff to provide and clear that up and allow approval of the emergency procurements now, which we know are not just COVID-related?
Yes.
Awesome. So there's been a motion and a friendly amendment. Did we get a second?
No, we need one, Vice Chairman.
I'll second it.
All right, let's take a vote. Commissioner Hausmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris? Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Commissioner Pitts is not present.
The motion passes, five A, zero N.
Okay, next item, please.
On page eight, two zero dash zero six zero nine, finance, presentation, review, and approval of the September second, 2020 budget sounding.
I think you have a motion.
Uh, do, I think one of y'all.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioner. Mr. Barron, Mr. Barron, the Registration and Election Director has a presentation to provide to you. So after the presentation, then, you know, we can discuss any concern or questions that we have on the soundings item. So Rick, please, you may proceed on your presentation.
Sure. Can you please put up the presentation?
Where is it?
There we go. Next slide, please. Okay, so we've, this year, we have received more than six thousand poll worker applications to date via the Fulton County website through our partnerships with Metro Atlanta Chamber of Commerce, Leadership Atlanta, and also the Secretary of State's office has been providing us with many names as well. We've increased the number of in-person poll worker training opportunities, which include a customer service component. We're increasing staffing levels to include the addition of election day line managers at each site. We are increasing the number of early voting sites that we have from nineteen in August up to thirty permanent sites for the November election. In addition, we'll have some outreach locations. And we also have the two mobile voting precincts that the Commissioners approved funding for last fall, which are the buses that Commissioner Hall referred to earlier. We have an early voting mega site, of course, at State Farm Arena. We've added one at Georgia International Congress Center. And then today, we secured Thomasville at North Point Mall to have one also in the north. Our election day sites have, are going to increase from the number in August of one hundred and seventy-four to approximately two hundred and thirty-four that the Board of Registration and Elections will approve on Friday. And then next week, at the regularly scheduled meeting, we will approve more. Might be over two hundred and forty election day sites by next Wednesday. We are going to also be releasing a mobile application for voters that will have a number of different components for them to get voting information on on October first, deploying a voter experience survey. Also, we're exploring the feasibility of publishing live early voting and election day site-specific wait times. Next site, slide, please. The absent, some details on the absentee ballot process. The Secretary of State launched an application portal earlier this week for voters to request absentee by mail ballots. And that enables a completely paperless application submission. The county, we are also working with U.S. Digital Response to have our own portal that will allow voters to upload their application. And then it will also allow us to bring in, scan in all of the ballot applications that we receive by mail and also by fax into that so that we can process everything from one dashboard. The voter, of course, will be able to track the status of their ballot as it is processed by elections. The portal, our portal, the one that is being built by U.S. Digital Response, is intended to replace the email submission process. Voters will be able to track the status of their processed application and mail ballot by the My Voter page. Outbound ballots, the mail-out ballots for all absentee ballot applications that have been received and processed. that have been received and processed into election at by mid-September. After that, the county will mail out the absentee by mail ballots. Uh, new printing capabilities will enable the county to print a USPS intelligent mail barcode onto outbound envelopes so that the ballot will be trackable until it reaches the voter's residence. We'll be doing that through our Bluecrest uh machine that is downstairs in the mailroom. We are also increasing the number of absentee ballot drops, Dropbox locations from twenty to forty. The new locations include almost all Fulton County libraries and county-owned facilities. The ninety-two percent of the voters live within three miles driving distance of a Dropbox location. Um, and all Dropbox locations will be covered by twenty-four seven video monitoring and will be empty daily. Uh ballots or envelopes that uh, but if when voters return absentee by mail ballots, the envelopes will have a barcode tracking uh IMDB on them in order for us to know how many ballots we will be receiving on a daily basis. Beginning in twenty twenty-one, we'll be able to add software to our Bluecrest downstairs that will enable us to put voter-specific USPS barcode tracking on there, but that won't, is not available this year. Um, we will have new automated letter opening devices that will save significant staff time and accelerate ballot receipt processing. We'll also have new scanning and signature verification technology, which will also reduce staff time and speed up processing. So when ballots come back to us, we will run them through our Bluecrest machine and they, that will do the signature verification. State policy now allows ballot processing to begin two weeks prior to election day, whereas in June and August, it was one week. This will enable us to manage the surge in volume of ballots. Next slide please. Originally, um, the budget for registration and elections was fifteen point one million when it was adopted for fiscal year twenty twenty. The core elections budget was three point one million. Supplements for uh general elections year were twelve million, was twelve million dollars. We have, um, we also had a capital set aside fund that was, that was approved in twenty nineteen to, to purchase uh carriers and also the, the buses and to add personnel. This year, um, we I went uh this summer and sought some grant funding, which the, the BOC approved today for over six point three million dollars. And we've also received uh five million dollars in COVID funding. And then with the three point five million dollar soundings request today, those, that is totals fourteen and a half million dollars more in additional investments for, we're going to be uh, we, we were able to secure a lot of new polling places for if we cleaned them afterwards. Uh, we've got tech-supported all-voting locations, postage and absentee ballots that we have to mail out. Uh, we've um purchased much more additional polling equipment and also funding for poll workers in, in those additional investments. And from there, I can take uh questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Um, uh, I believe uh that is certainly good information for us all to know. I believe that is specifically targeting the November election, right?
Yes, yeah, we, we do have the September twenty-ninth special election uh and early voting for that starts on Tuesday. We, we've also had to add a December first runoff election. And then we will have a January fourth runoff election for U.S. Senate as well.
Okay, uh and, and one of the Senate races?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh colleagues, any questions?
Uh, I had a couple of comments. Um, thank you, Mr. Barron. A great presentation. Uh, the November elections, uh, you all know I've obviously have been one of the strongest uh vocal critics of elections in terms of uh elections getting their act together. Richard, I, I gotta say this was probably the best presentation and uh asking for the resources beforehand, I think is a wise choice. I think they're going to need every single dime of this money for November and possibly more. Um, and, and uh I, I would definitely uh recommend we approve it because come November fourth, I think we're going to be very glad that we did. They're coming ahead of time and asking for what they think they're going to need. Uh, this election's going to probably be like none other. Uh, the types of lines and the types of situations we're going to be dealing with and the turnout on election day as well as early voting is going to be uh just overwhelming. So, so I think it's definitely needed. And I'm glad you're coming to ask for what you actually are going to need beforehand as opposed to saying we're good, we're in good shape. Um, I think you see what is coming and uh again, I, I think the uh, I think the request is, i- is uh, is a good request and I'm going to support it uh because I want you to be as prepared as possible for November.
Uh, thank you Commissioner Khan. Mr. Barron, I too should uh have, have been vocal uh in criticism, but I should be equally vocal in praise that great job in getting the grants and going out and securing these additional resources uh to make sure that, you know, we can always do better. Uh, obviously I know no one's perfect, but um you, you've done, you and your team have done a great job in the election sport and going out and securing these extra grants. So that, that is certainly to be applauded. Uh, colleagues, any more comments?
I have a question. Question?
Commissioner, I'll go right ahead.
Yeah, um, okay, so thirty-four million, Mr. Barron. It's a whole lot of money. I, I, I mean, I'm looking at your pro, plan here and what you're spending it on and everything makes sense. And I know that a lot of this will be in use in Fulton County for a long time. Okay?
Yes.
Obviously not the personnel issues, but a lot of the hardware and the investment in the warehouse and all of the things that we've put in place in addition to, to the machines, um, we will take advantage of for years to come. So I, I, it gives me a little bit more of a comfort level, but thirty-four million dollars is staggering.
Mm-hmm.
Um, congratulations on getting some of it funded with grant money, but you're still coming back to the general fund and asking for three and a half million. And you're taking five million of the um limited resources and CARES funds for this too. So um, it's uh, I'm struggling with it because unfortunately, and you know, I've been very vocal in my opinions here, but we'd already invested twenty million and we had just a, you know, crazy situation in June. You know, can you look at the voters in Fulton County, the taxpayers in Fulton County? Um, and assure them that, that we're going to have a good election throughout the rest of this year, that you're doing everything possible to not have people waiting in line for hours in the weather, um have everybody trained, to have the equipment deployed properly, to do everything that we could possibly do. You're preparing for every outcome and you're being a good steward of this money because this is a lot of money.
Yes, Commissioner, yes, it is, it is a lot of money and um I, my focus is, is on November and we have September and uh also to, to look at, but I think that some of the, some of these things we put in place for the August election and we're going to be able to uh take another step in September to do that. And I, I think that we're going to have as, as successful election in twenty twenty as we did in November of twenty sixteen. Um, I think that, you know, we, we went through a, a very challenging election in June. Um, I think there have been a lot of silver linings that have come out of that, one of which is, is the, the grant funding. Um, I think COVID is presenting challenges still and part of that grant funding is meant to, so that we were able to recruit more polling places and also retain and recruit more poll, poll workers because we have, will have more than seventy new locations that we've added since the June election, which is a, a, a lot of polling places to add and, and we need to make notified of all of those changes and my staff is working hard. We are working in partnership with the County Executive Management and they've been a great help uh throughout this whole process and um we, I, I can say that we are going to have a successful election.
Okay, well, you know, we're all paying a lot of attention. I've even started watching your Board of Registration and Elections meetings. Um, it's a new thing for me. Um, this discussion about doing a county portal, uh when the state's doing one for the applications, um, I hope that that's not uh redundancy, that's not going to be beneficial, um that it doesn't cause confusion. Um, uh, you know, I went to try and uh find how to sign up for the absentee ballots on our website and it's not on the homepage. You kind of have to dig for it. I, I think we need to make that a little easier for people to find. Um, but you know, a- again, I, I hope that what we're doing is going to streamline, not complicate. And um, you know, I, I'm concerned and I've heard you, some of your election board members express concern about having a duplicate portal.
Mm-hmm.
So what do you have to say about that?
Uh, the portal, the, our portal was meant to, to alleviate the emailed submission. So what we will do is once we, rather than, than having emailed submissions come in, we will have actually an intake mechanism. What that will do is allow voters to upload their, their application, because we're still, a lot of third-party groups are out there and they are sending out app, applications by mail. So there, there are basically four ways we receive applications right now. We get them through the mail, through fax.
Don't you think though that now?
Email to the State's portal. What we want to do, we're going to promote.
Can I just stop you real quick because I know we're a lot of time. Don't you just think that now that people can do it online, that the faxes and the mailed applications are really going to come down to a trickle?
Right now they.
Do that because there's no other way to do it in the past.
Right, we're, we're getting uh, just over the weekend, we received over ten thousand mailed ballots, so.
Well, it wasn't available until now. Anyway, I'm just, I'm just concerned. I hope you, you know, you make sure that whatever you do is meant to be streamlined. I'm glad to see you taking advantage of technology. I know sometimes we differed on your opinion on using technology. I'm glad to see you moving forward with that. I'm just praying for you. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, any more questions, comments? All right, uh, I guess we entertain a motion.
Motion.
We got a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ellis, is that a second?
Yes.
We got a motion, a second. Uh, Commissioner Hausmann, how's, what's your vote, please? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Commissioner Hausmann?
He's on mute on your screen.
Commissioner Hausmann, are you there? We're not able to hear you. Looks like we can see you, no? She's all right. So Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Morris is out. Uh, Commissioner Hall?
She's muted on your screen too.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
The motion passes. Four yeas, zero nays.
All right, next agenda item please.
Two zero dash zero six one zero, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval to renew existing contracts to provide operational management mail services.
Is there a presentation on this or do we get ready for a vote? Any discussion, colleagues?
Commissioner Erickson, there's no presentation.
All right. Colleagues, any discussion, any questions about this item? All right, we'll take a vote. Commissioner Hausmann?
Got a second, Murray?
Yes. Uh, uh, do we get a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Khan, second. Uh, Commissioner Hausmann, what's your vote, please? Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
The motion passes. Four yeas, zero nays.
All right, next item please.
Two zero dash zero six one one, with Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval to renew existing contracts to provide HBA C equipment and parts.
Move approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hausmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
The motion passes. Five yeas, zero nays.
All right, thank you. Next item please.
Two zero dash zero six one two, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval to renew existing contracts to provide landfill solid waste disposal and single strain recycling services.
Approval.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Commissioner Hausmann? Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
The motion passes. Four yeas, zero nays.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
On page nine, two zero dash six one three, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval to increase spending authority to provide additional onsite preventative generator system maintenance and repair services.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Commissioner Hausmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
The motion passes. Five yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Next item please.
Two zero dash zero six one four, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval of a guaranteed maximum price to provide construction phase services for the renovation and refurbishment of the restrooms and common areas in the Fulton County Government and Judicial Center.
Colleagues, any discussion?
Motion.
There's a motion by Haus, second by Khan's?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hausmann?
Yes, and I expect we spent, save a lot of water money after we do this.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
The motion passes. Five yeas, zero nays.
Next item?
Two zero dash zero six one five, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval to renew existing contracts to provide onsite preventative and predictive maintenance services for chill, chillers.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Commissioner Hausmann? Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
The motion passes. Four yeas, zero nays.
All right, next item please.
Two zero dash zero six one six, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval of the lowest responsible bidder to provide affordable moving and storage unit rental.
Is there a motion?
I'm in.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, let's vote. Commissioner Hausmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
The motion passes. Five yeas, zero nays.
Next, thank you. Next item please.
On page ten, two zero dash zero six one seven, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval to increase spending authority to cover the cost for immediate replacement of. to cover the cost for immediate replacement of a burnt, burned pump motor and optional leak controller.
And this is zero six one seven?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'm in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote. Commissioner Housman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
And motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Two zero dash zero six one eight. Information Technology requests approval, recommended proposal to provide homestead exemption verification services.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, let's vote. We got a motion and a second. Commissioner Housman? Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Motion passes, four yeas, zero nays.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Under Justice and Safety, two zero dash zero six one nine. Superior Court Administration requests approval for award.
Hello, we lost your call.
Two zero dash zero six one nine. Superior Court Administration requests approval to award a contract without competition to provide data analysis evaluation services.
Colleagues, what's your pleasure? Is there a motion?
I'm in.
Is there a second?
I have a question about that.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Commissioner Hall?
Um, because it says without competition, so, um, can, is Felicia there? I don't see her. Is anyone, is anyone there? Oh, I see you, Felicia. You're in the other room.
I'm hiding.
All right. So it says without competition.
This is a grant, Commissioner Hall, and so there are a lot of requirements for the grant. So we did the advertisement for five days to see if there was anybody else available that could provide the service. And I believe there are a couple of people on the phone from Superior Court who can explain the services a little better.
All right.
I think John Collins?
No, it's going to be Kristen.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Kristen.
Hi, everybody. This is, my name is Kristen Schillig. I'm the project manager for this grant-funded project. And the way that, so this, this project just quickly is what we call a high-utilizer project, where we're data matching between lots of different systems to try to identify our cohort of people that are kind of bouncing between all the different criminal justice, healthcare systems. And Applied Research Services is our contract agency and they are the only agency that has access to certain data sets needed for this specific project. And so we actually wrote them into the grant and the federal government approved them to be in this proposal and approved it the way it was proposed. Did you have a specific questions?
I was just asking about the fact that it says without competition, that's all. Trying to figure out why there was no other competition. Thank you, Kristen.
Sure.
Okay, colleagues, any other discussion? Questions? Do we have a motion and a second? I believe we did.
Yes, Ellis and Khan.
Okay, let's vote. Commissioner Housman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis? Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
And motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Two zero dash zero six two zero. Public Works requests approval of cooperative purchasing to provide project process updates for the Big Creek wastewater reclamation facility expansion.
All right, colleagues, any questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second? I'll second.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, the item number, just to make sure I'm in the right place here.
Zero dash-
I believe it is zero six two zero.
Okay. Is there a public art component to this project? Is, is in all of our other projects in Fulton County?
Do we have any more from Public Works?
Yes, Commissioner Housman?
To the Big Creek project in general, is there a public art component?
I'll ask David to help us answer that question, but I don't believe so.
Commissioner, the CEO is correct. This Public Works projects have typically not been subject to the public arts components that other general fund-funded projects have been funded because of the nature of the bond and the ratepayer structure for the way the projects are funded. However, I am in discussions with the arts departments to figure out a way to incorporate some sort of public art component as part of this project, either onsite or probably more than likely at a nearby location such as the Chattahoochee Nature Center since the Big Creek site itself will not be open to the general public, unlike J.C.C.
Good, that's good to know. There's also, of course, the trail that Roswell wants to, you know, utilize the back end of that property to connect to. So perhaps there's a way to have that be a part of whatever you consider over there.
Five seven.
All right, all right. Thank you for that information. That's all I have.
All right. Ready for the vote? Commissioner Housman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis? Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
And motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
All right, thank you. Oh six two one. Next item, please.
On page eleven, under Arts and Libraries, two zero dash zero six two one. Request approval of an increase in spending authority to provide additional design services.
Question. Hello? Okay, if you go to packet page six twenty-two, in the back, it's listing out the summary of the proposed changes for this item. And I just had a question about change order number zero 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 one. It's like a little over forty-eight thousand dollars of the money is going specifically to warehousing, delivery and permits. And so I had a question about, you know, why so much money is going toward that. And then my second question is, change order number zero zero four says it's fifteen thousand dollars is going toward owner-controlled contingency, but there's no explanation as to what is owner, owner-controlled contingency and why it's getting fifteen thousand dollars.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Ellis?
Yeah, this is Ellis Kirby. I'll answer and joke and add on. Good afternoon. A change order number one has to do with some true-ups for warehousing for the group one through four libraries that we have done. When it comes to logistics, we had some additional logistics there. That's thirty-six thousand of forty-eight. We're also anticipating twelve grand for parking permits as we deliver furniture at Central. So that is coming expenses in the change order that totals the forty-eight that you referred to. The last item, which is change order number four, has to do with logistics for Central Library. We're just going to carry some contingency because we're concerned about the access and the delivery methods for Central. So it's really just a contingency. If we don't spend it, we won't use it. We're preparing for that delivery later in the fall.
Thank you so much, Ellis.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion? Uh, do we have a motion? Do we already get the motion and a second?
No, you need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Is there a second? I'll second. Let's vote. Commissioner Housman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
And motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Two zero dash zero five six four. Arts and Culture requests approval of a resolution establishing the Fulton County poet laureate and naming the inaugural Fulton County poet laureate, Dr. Karen J. Head.
All right, this item was held last time. Um, I think Commissioner Hall had some concerns and so did I. Is there anyone to speak on this item?
Sure.
And we did briefing memo earlier and we also have Lionel available on Zoom to answer any questions.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so I did read the memo. I actually have it right here. And the only additional questions that I did have, because I think it was kind of missed. Well, you kind of asked, you, you did try to answer it under what's called Communications Plan on, I guess this would be like page two of your memo. But it only references the fact that you use artscall.org and some radio stations and, and social, and social media platforms to do communications out to everyone about this award. And so my other, my additional question is, did we use Fulton County's website? Did we use FGTV and did we use Fulton County's social media? Because I always look to them first because that's what they're here for, to communicate everything out to the public for us.
This is Lionel Thomas, Director of Fulton County Arts and Culture. And so, yes, Commissioner Hall, we did. I'm sorry, that was omitted from that memorandum, but we did use external affairs and all the mechanisms that they have at their disposal. In addition, we provided a memorandum to all the commissioners so that they could help us spread the word as well.
Okay, and then that being said, with all of the communications that were used to get this information out to the public, that concerns me that we, we only had sixteen eligible applicants. So I'm hoping that you actually have more applicants than sixteen and that you narrowed it down to sixteen eligible applicants. Because, and just in my district alone, there's so many artists in the arts community, so huge. And we all know this because my district always seems to get the biggest number, total number of awards in, you know, the arts. So were there more than just sixteen?
Yes, there were more than sixteen. There were probably close to thirty-five or forty applicants when we started that process. And it was whittled down to the sixteen and then further down to the three finalists that were interviewed by an expert panel. Most of those did come from your district, by the way.
Okay, thank you so much.
Um, I think, I guess, the, the question I remember Commissioner Hall asking last time was it seemed like we kind of put the cart before the horse. It seemed like the idea of this would have been brought to the board before. It's like, it's already been done and now we're just really approving something that's already been done. So if you could speak to that, please.
Sure, Commissioner, Vice Chair. One of the things that we felt very strongly about in the Arts Council, this was an Arts Council-driven initiative and approved by the Arts Council, is that they wanted to go through the process of identifying someone. And then, we then had subsequent discussions that talked about what would be the most optimal way to really set this in stone and, and develop a position for the future. And then it was suggested that we seek a resolution. So we worked with legal to develop the resolution. So I understand, we did go through a very extensive process. There were a number of very qualified folks, but the person that we are recommending is very qualified, having worked with many different diverse populations and with the credentials to really take the arts to the, the, especially the literary arts, which we heard a lot about in our planning discussion with the Cultural Action Plan, that the literary community was very interested in, in us providing additional resources and support.
So now I see that this is a two-year appointment. Um, wow, I gotta get some charge on my phone. I'm gonna lose you. I see this is a two-year appointment. I see their funds allocated. Are those funds allocated for each year or total funds for both two years?
Those funds are, and, and if you look a little closer, after the first year, it is a two-year appointment, but after the first year, the individual will be assessed as to their performance and whether they will be renewed. As for the funding, it's only on an annual basis. So we just identified the funding for that one year, it's not for the two years.
Okay, um, and then, I, I mean, I don't know how I missed this. You know, I heard you say you sent information to the commissioners, but I certainly would have, you know, had I seen this, I certainly would have gone out of the way to promote it or perhaps to do more to get the word out. So, um, sounds like I did see the memo. I'm willing to support it. But, um, if you will, just make sure that I am all the way in the loop next time, please.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Colleagues, any more comments, discussion? All right, let's vote.
Need a motion and a second, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Let's vote. Commissioner Housman? Commissioner Ellis? Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
And the motion fails, three yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Five hundred and eleven, under Commissioners' Presentation and Discussion Items, two zero dash zero six two three. Discussion Census Update, sponsored by Commissioner Khan.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll be brief. Obviously, the 2020 census is closing down on September thirtieth. It was curtailed and cut very short. Too short, if you ask me. I just saw the news report that cited the Congress is looking at serious errors that may occur because of the curtailing of the census deadline by one month. Essentially, to make a long story short, the Complete Count Committee, which we all appointed members to unanimously ask for additional funding to, due to the fact of the shortening of the census and the, the great undercount in our area, in our county. Most of our cities are below fifty percent. And, you know, since the self-response is, is done, the hard-to-count population is not easy to reach nowadays, especially in the middle of a pandemic. They're asking for additional funding around, about, in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Jessica, I believe you have a breakdown of your request. And I, I did see, I did take a look at the request. They're sorely needed to take us to the finish line so that we can get an accurate count. Obviously, you know, twenty-three hundred dollars per person is a big deal. So spending an additional hundred and fifty thousand to get us across the finish line with decent numbers. every nickel of that we spend is gonna come back, uh, dressed up like a dollar for us. So I would definitely recommend that we spend the extra money to get this thing wrapped up the right way and to get the highest count for Fulton County. So we can bring that money in for the next decade, year after year, uh, in the amount we're supposed to get. So that's all I got and, uh, I hope we support it.
Is there a plan? Um, you know, I was on a conference call the other day and they had a, with DeKalb County and they had a calendar of events for, for the whole month, including something virtually for every day. Is there a outlined plan for the use of these funds?
Um, am I on mute? Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I, I wanted to just go back. Uh, Ms. Calhoun, I believe, is also on the line with me. Um, uh, and Commissioner Khan is correct that this, um, there was a request from the Complete Count Committee. Um, I, what I would like to do is to give you all an update though about the work that has happened and the events that are planned within the funding that we have received, um, through the end of, uh, September. Um, Commissioner Khan is correct that the Census Bureau, um, originally had, as, as you all are aware, this is one of the many, many, um, government services that has been disrupted because of the pandemic. And the Census Bureau had previously announced that they would end the census at the end of, um, October. As of, um, a few weeks ago, they moved that deadline up to the end of September. Um, as of this week, Fulton County has received a sixty percent, what is called a self-response count, which is where the individual has responded. There are enumerators in the field today who are, um, continuing the count. It, it certainly is a concern. I think that all of us share that we are, um, not further along in the count process and that Fulton County is behind both the state and, and the national average. But I, I, again, um, we are here to provide an update today about what we have done and what is planned in the next few weeks. Um, DeMarco, next slide, please. So you can see here, um, where we have, um, where the numbers are today. And there are, um, unfortunately disparities, um, city by city. We have, um, some of our highest city responsories are, um, Johns Creek. Not surprisingly, Mountain Park, although they're such a small city, one would think we could go door to door. Um, but as you can see, some of our cities, unfortunately, particularly College Park, are still in the forties and that is, um, certainly a concern. Next slide, please. So, um, this year, the Board of Commissioners, um, as, as part of our 2020 budget, allocated funds, um, for a, a number of outreach initiatives, including the 2020 census. And so I'd like to, um, congratulate and thank Fran as well as other members of our team, a lot of collaboration with the cities and with other departments, um, in getting information out about the census. So we've done, um, paid advertising, we've done events. Unfortunately, uh, many of the events that we have planned this year were not able, um, to move forward because of the pandemic. So we have, um, and again, I have to give Brandon the team credit for being very innovative in ways that we have done that. So one example, um, is as our tag offices have reopened and unfortunately we've, we have had, um, uh, customers waiting in line at times. We've had staff out there doing some social distance outreach where they've had materials available. Uh, we have worked with events. Um, some of you all have had events and we've ensured that we have census materials available for the public and, and those kinds of things. Um, so the, this is an update about, um, what the things that we have done. Next slide, please. Um, here's an example of how we have used some of the, um, advertising dollars that were allocated by the board. You can see some of our, um, census, um, bus shelter ads as well as bus ads. And that was a wonderful cooperative with some of the, um, other municipalities and were, um, specifically in hard-to-count areas or areas that have historically had a lower self-response rate. Next slide, please. Uh, again, this is kind of an update about some of the, um, specific investments that have been made, different, um, platforms that have been used, um, printing promotions, events where we have been able to, as well as insert, for example, every assessment notice this year had a census, um, notice within it, um, as well as for a year where most Fulton County water customer, most people in Fulton County get their water, um, from someone other than Fulton County, but Fulton County does have a water utility that we, um, in North Fulton that where, where we have billing and we did include, um, notices in those bills as well. Next slide, please. So, um, Fran, I'd like to ask you perhaps to, to jump in here and talk about what you have planned for the last mile as you've described it. These are the kinds of events that we would, um, and outreach opportunities over the next thirty days that we would, um, be able to carry out and to continue to focus on low-response tracks. One thing, um, that 2020 has brought that has been a, one advantage has been, um, that this is the first year the census has been online. So in previous, um, census, this is a hard word to say, we did not have real-time data necessarily available to us. Um, because of this, and I believe all of you get the daily response rates that are sent out, we can see in real-time which census traps have had lower response rates and therefore is, um, an opportunity to have more targeted outreach. And that is exactly what Fran and the team have done is really, um, drill down to the community level and find, um, opportunities to do outreach that were, um, very targeted. Fran, would you, um, could you kind of jump in?
Yes, hi. Thank you, Jessica. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, with regard to our last mile campaign, we have looked at a number of different things, really, uh, of course, trying to utilize our CDC guidelines, but also going out into the community. Uh, as was mentioned by Jessica, we have been tabling, uh, at the tax offices, uh, taking advantage of the fact that, that we've had so much traffic there. We would also like to, going forward this month, um, for early voting, be able to rotate through some of those sites, um, during September. And we've reached out to various restaurants. We have several. We have about seventy-five on our list and we had some kind of some lukewarm responses. Um, we have flyers that have a QR code and of course that stands for quick response. And we are asking persons, uh, in these retail districts and the restaurants to please, um, place the items on their counters to also, um, give them out in their delivery service bags and the like. Some have agreed even to give discounts. And so we are hoping that promotions of those partners will drive additional traffic to those restaurants. So we will be kicking that off next week. We have been doing since the fifteenth of August apartment pop-ups. We have been in East Point, College Park, South Fulton. We're scheduling these for Saturdays leading up to the census deadline. These are opportunities where we're going in with the improvement of the management there, leaving information in the management offices, but also, uh, sliding door hangers and the like under the door. We're trying not to touch all of the, uh, high-touch surfaces, but really trying to make sure that each resident in those low-response areas gets a flyer. They see the QR code, letting them know that they can utilize their mobile phone and complete the census, uh, very quickly and, um, very easily. We will have on next week a webinar with, uh, faith-based community members. We are in partnership with Fair Count for this outreach opportunity. This is to provide some training and awareness for our local pastors and faith institutions. Uh, some of the asks that we're, we are making of them is that they make internal robocalls. Often folk will hang up on persons who are calling from an unknown person, but most will listen to their pastor. And so we're hoping to get some good responses there as well as asking those institutions to change the marquees on their signs. Our school system, Fulton County Schools, uh, did this marquee wave for us during the summer. And, uh, it's just asking people, of course, on their marquee, please complete your census. We thought that we would be doing every Wednesday this month, um, after having been delayed earlier, uh, the food distributions. But, uh, the system, school system changed their minds again. So what we've now proposed to them is an extra credit challenge. And so Superintendent Looney is reviewing that matter right now. This would allow for classrooms to ask their students to have parents, show proof of having completed the census. Those students would get extra credit. Uh, and so that, that's a challenge we're looking forward to through the school system. We have been working with them since December, supplying virtual information. As Jessica said, we had to pivot very quickly. The census went live on March the twelfth and on March, of course, sixteenth, we were beginning to shut down. Um, and then we do have new literature for these areas. Uh, part of what the Complete Count Committee was hoping to do was to use the, uh, new collateral and the new messaging, um, to expand it for the use of billboards, uh, in these areas, you know, for some high visibility, uh, looking at also geo-targeting those billboards, uh, to capture, uh, and to place that, uh, data on cell phones. Next slide. Okay, is that it? Okay. All right, and so we do have the apartment outreach that we are actively pursuing. Uh, we've been supporting commissioner, uh, related events with giving, uh, out our promotional items. And we're working directly with the cities, supplying them with materials and partnering with them on the ground. Uh, we are receiving more and more retail outlet, uh, invitations to come. And so most of what we will be doing are the in-person social distancing items. And we can certainly supply you with that calendar, Commissioner Arrington.
Thank you. Um, colleagues, any discussion? Uh, uh, you know, I, I like this. Uh, I wonder, he- is there any possible way to have census people at any of our COVID nineteen testing sites? Are we giving out information at those sites? We got, what, a thousand people a day coming through those sites?
So unfortunately, they don't have enough staff to go to all of those sites. Uh, we can certainly order more suppo- no, more collateral and ensure that each one of those sites is covered. I know some have been covered on a rotation, but I don't believe that we've ever covered all of those sites.
Um, I think there was certainly, who's that? Who, who, go right ahead.
Um, I'm sorry, Commissioner, um, Mr. Vice Chairman, I was just gonna say, um, to kind of follow up to Fran's point, we can absolutely do that. We could start with the, um, permanent site, um, and, and we can accomplish that, I think, very quickly. That's a great suggestion.
Awesome, yeah. It would seem like, you know, we could kill two birds with one stone. Um, you know, especially with these, I guess, the last thirty or twenty-eight days, uh, twenty-nine days. So, sounds good. Um, and so the committee's asking for another hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Is there a motion?
Uh, motion.
Vice Chair, this isn't an action item. It's only a discussion item and there was no...
Uh, uh, I would like to make a motion for the ask from the Complete Count Committee, which was a unanimous ask of the Complete Count Committee, uh, for an additional one hundred and fifty thousand for our last mile push.
Yeah, uh, Madam Attorney, my understanding, any item on the agenda can be, there can be a vote whether it's discussion or not. Is that wrong?
Well, historically, under your rules, you all generally require them to be listed as an action item, but you, you, a motion could be taken at any point in time, but this is not listed as an action item and there wasn't a, a published, your agenda, there's no published request for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, well, that, that's my motion. I think it's very much needed and I think it'll benefit every single citizen in Fulton County. And we're running out of time.
Is there a second? I'll second. Let's vote. Commissioner Hausman?
I'm gonna vote no, just because I didn't hear staff say they needed this money. Looks like they've already got a plan with the resources that they have. If I'd heard differently, I might feel differently. And if they come back in two weeks with a plan that they need some funding for, I'm, I'm open to that, but I'm gonna vote no on this.
Commissioner Ellis?
No.
Commissioner Hall?
I wanted to see, I, I wanted to hear the staff as well on do they need the money? And, and then my very first thought was, do we have the money? Because, I mean, we're looking for money all over the place already for other stuff like the, the, the COVID nineteen funding for the mayors and I just want to be very careful about funding. So can we, can we just hold this? Let the staff, um, come back to us with the need and the use of the money?
You're in the middle of a...
Oh, well.
I would like to say, I'm just gonna hold, but I don't even know. If we hold for two weeks, there, there's only twenty-nine days left. If you hold for two weeks, then you only got two weeks left.
But, but Vice Chair, can we get the question answered from staff if this is needed first, first of all? So that, that's cleared up at least.
Uh, Commissioner Khan, and like the Commissioners have said, it is a, um, difficult decision. We do have some available funding left in our budget. This was a request from the Complete Count Committee. Um, we, it, it's a, um, and I am also aware that there are many competing interests. You know, you, um, we are very focused right now on our election outreach and things of that nature. Um, and that has been a lot of our focus. Um, I think that i- if the board were to make this allocation, we would of course move swiftly to, um, execute. But I, um, I do want to be candid that we do have some available funds, um, remaining that we are working to spend. Um, and again, this was a, a request from the, um, primarily from the Complete Count Committee. Um, I do understand and I appreciate Commissioner Khan has been very passionate and supportive of the census throughout this campaign. Uh, I am very concerned about, um, and I want to be candid about that, about the complete count efforts. The Census Bureau has not had the resources we expected and the, um, their timeline and the rapid change in timeline is extremely concerning, um, for, for Fulton County and for all of our cities and our school systems as well. So I, I'm not trying to be, um, evasive, but it's a complex issue.
Is, is that a yes or a no? Do you want the money or not?
Commissioner, again, um, I, I, I'm, I feel like I'm in a difficult position because I, and this was a request from the Complete Count Committee. And I, um, I, again, I, we would be able to execute on this, but this, I want to be clear that this was not a, our specific request.
Thank you, Jessica. It doesn't look like I'm gonna get the votes anyway. I'm, I'm gonna vote yes. Commissioner Khan, what's your vote?
I vote yes.
Uh, so it'll come back in two weeks anyway. So, um, uh, Jessica, if you and your team can, um, or work with the C- Census Committee to see, uh, what their plans are, how they would use it. Um, I heard some of the Commissioners say they may consider it, so, um, if you bring that back. Yes, Commissioner Hall?
Okay, I was trying to, um, mute and ask a question. Jessica said that the request for the funding came from the Complete Count Committee. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so did the Complete Count Committee identify what, all the needs, uh, for the money and how it would be spent? Because it's, it, I'm confused because it's like Jessica's being put in a predicament of... of it's almost like she's gonna get the money, but she hasn't been included in, in really identifying the the amount and what she's gonna use it for. She's saying that she could use it, but it just seems like she hasn't been in the loop completely on this request. And so.
I, I'd be, I'd be glad to address that. The, the Complete Count Committee has provided a proposal for um, for use of the funds that would be additional, um primarily additional advertising um and printing resources um in addition to what we have in place today. Um, so there would be um things, so it would amplify the additional advertising in particular, um which is probably the most, as you saw in our earlier list of activities, advertising is the most expensive of those um activities. And that's where the majority of those resources would go.
Why was that, why was that not included in the proposal in the PowerPoint that you just showed to us? I mean, that, it seems like that was helpful to the committee.
Yeah, Ja- Jessica, could you read down the list of the funding asked for this one hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I'm gonna have to refer that to Ms. Falcone because I do not have that um in front of me.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you for the question. Um, we had uh received the request from the Complete Count Committee. I believe uh the first request was made um for a hundred thousand. They then went back and requested um one fifty, thirty-three thousand at that time. We've moved that up to thirty-seven was for billboards, um with again the geo-targeting uh, uh, marketing aspect to it. Uh, they were looking to support school um supply drives, back-to-school drives, uh as well as was mentioned, literature printing, additional promotional um items and uh event support.
All right. Well, if you can maybe get that information to us, I think that would be helpful. Um, you know, to know, you know, what events are, what, what are the dates? Um, it, it would have been helpful to have it as part of the presentation here today, but we've already had a vote. Thank you. Next item.
Bottom of page eleven, two zero dash zero six two five. Discussion update of activities of the City of Atlanta Fulton County Recreation Authority, sponsored by Vice Chair Arrington.
Uh, colleagues, you'll see, uh, you should see the copy of the agenda from the last meeting uh in your packets. Um, if you have any questions, uh certainly be able to try to answer those. I don't know, uh, Commissioner Ellis, if you have anything you want to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, um, next item. Thank you.
Next item's on our Uncle Caustic agenda, removed by Commissioner Morris. First item is on page two, two zero dash zero five eight seven, Superior Court Administration. Request approval to process outstanding and current invoice purch- purchase order via purch- purchase order for medical waste pickup and removal services.
I have a, I, I'd like to add something because is Commissioner Morris here?
No, I think he had a hard stop. I think he left um earlier.
So, so since we don't have him here, I do have one question that is actually for the, the three of the items that he pulled, which is five eight seven, five eight eight and five eight nine. Um, but it's the same exact question. If, if I could ask that and then it could just be addressed, that would, if everybody's okay with that.
Certainly, certainly. Um, you know, uh, I, I was gonna ask, is, is this time sensitive? If not, I would hold until Commissioner Morris is back, but I don't know what the group's pleasure is. But please go right ahead with your questions, Commissioner.
Um, the only question I had for um all three, five eight seven, five eight eight and five eight nine is the part that says pending completion of the procurement process in fiscal year twenty. And I, I'm try, I want to get a clear understanding of what exactly does that mean? That it's pending completion of the procurement process? Because I thought when the items come before us, they've already gone through the procurement process.
Commissioner, this is Felicia, Stormwood, uh, one of the issues is that these did not go through the procurement process, which is why they are before you and the services have already been rendered by the vendor. And so I explained to them that they had to present these to the board for approval. Now, we, we will take them through a procurement process moving forward, but these were services already rendered um for one reason or another. And I believe someone from Superior Court Administration is on the line and maybe they can explain further.
Please, please do. I, I just want to know how you purchase something without going through the procurement process. That's, that sounds unethical or some, it doesn't, that just doesn't sound right.
Do we have anyone from Superior Court Administration? Was that the clerk's office or?
No.
Hello, Commissioners. This is John Collins. I am the Accountability Court Director. Uh, these three particular vendors, uh their services were rendered uh last year by the previous administration and they did not follow through the correct uh procurement process at that time.
Is this time sensitive? Is this something that could be handled at the next meeting?
Um, our one particular vendor that we're using at the moment, um, the reconnect one is time sensitive. They have extended this a number of times for us. And uh they are a crucial part of our current virtual uh services because obviously we want to reduce how often our clients are visiting the building. And they do provide us with the ability to uh curfew check and home check our clients without actually uh showing up at their doorstep. It's through a virtual app. And they also provide us with a automatic system for randomizing our drug testing and calling clients into the building when they need to test. That one is uh the most time sensitive of the three.
But let me ask this question. So isn't there a limit on how much you can spend without going through the procurement process?
Um, gosh, and a lot of this did happen when we, it appeared to happen in twenty nineteen. It came to our attention recently, um, and we did meet with David Summerlin and he knows the process. Um, but this is the only way we can get the vendors paid.
Wait, did you answer my question? Uh, my question was, isn't there a, a, a limit on how much you can spend without going through the procurement process? I didn't hear the answer to that.
Two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
That is the, two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cent is the limit that you can spend without going through the procurement process? And how much was spent on each one of these, though? Was it over that amount?
Yes, there's twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand and nine thousand.
Then that's a problem in itself. If any one of us as a commissioner spent over twenty-four ninety-nine and ninety-nine cent and didn't go through the procurement process, we'd probably be on our way to be locked up or sentenced or something like that or unethical. I mean, we can't set that, we can't have something like that going on. And we, do we not have a process in place to catch things like that from happening?
Um, Commissioner, I think some of these are um agreements that the Superior Court had um in place for some time. I'm not sure how they were doing that before that time, but when Mr. Summerlin came into the position, he brought these to our attention. We advised him, uh, along with the county attorney's office on how we needed to get these past due um for services rendered paid. We did have to bring them before the board. They are now aware of, of what the process is. Um, and so I don't think we're gonna have that problem moving forward. We are working with them to get the procurement out on the streets, um, so we can get these contracts awarded. But a lot of this happened in twenty nineteen.
And so, um, my question again is, do we have anything in place to catch this type of thing so it doesn't happen? Because, well, we already know that it's happened because we have this before us, but do we have a process? Is the process broken or what's, what is the problem?
So Commissioner, I don't know if it's broken, but if we are unaware that someone has signed an agreement for a service, um, we, we didn't know, no one knew that there were prior agreements that someone signed that they were not authorized to sign for the service.
So agreements that get signed by people, they don't go through the county attorney's office or anywhere else after they're signed for any type of checks and balances?
Those did not.
How?
Those did not.
How do they not? I'm really trying to understand.
So, so let's do the, let's do this. Commissioner Morris isn't here. Um, I, I, you know, I don't know what the group's pleasure is. You guys want to go forward or you want to hold? Is there a motion?
I think somebody's trying to speak.
From uh Superior Court uh in the business office, and I can kind of speak a little bit to what may have happened. There was a recent, uh, an employee who uh resigned back in twenty nineteen that did sign these uh contracts on behalf of the county and disciplinary action, I believe, was uh handled or he was reprimanded by Yolanda Lewis, the then court administrator who was in place at that time. However, um, we were still found to be um liable or just um on the hook for these services that the vendor that we signed the contract for. So we're trying now to do our best to make sure that we have all of these uh procurement services in order and uh moving forward. So this will not happen again.
Thank you so much, Heather. That answered the question. So the employee who did this has since left.
Yes.
And now you're putting in measure, putting measures in place to make sure that this doesn't happen again. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is a second? I'll second. Let's vote. Commissioner Hausman?
This on one or all three of these items?
This is on uh announced item oh five eight seven.
Can we take them together?
Um, we have to do a motion to amend, I think, in order to do that. But yes, we can.
Uh, can I make a substitute motion to do the, all three items together, please?
I'll second. Is there, let's vote. Um, Commissioner Hausman?
Yes, and glad to see the problem is addressed.
All right. So wait, this needs to be the, this needs to be the vote on the motion to amend the agenda.
All right, yes.
This is the vote on the motion to amend the agenda and then we'll come back and vote on all three items. Uh, Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
All right. And then now we'll take the motion uh on all three. Uh, is there a motion or is it? Do we need to do the motion again, county attorney?
Yes, sir. It was, it was moved by Commissioner Hall originally and seconded by you for just that one item. Do you want to move that, Commissioner Hall?
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
On these three items?
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Let's vote. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Next item.
Next item on the consent agenda on page three, also held removed by Commissioner Morris. Zero dash zero five nine zero, Juvenile Court, request approval of the law's responsible bidder to perform, to perform surveillance officer community supervision services.
Is, is this time sensitive? Commissioner Morris isn't present. I don't know why he asked to have it removed so mu- I'm, I'm, you know, tempted to yield to, to his request and let him ask questions on it unless this is time sensitive.
Commissioner, this is time sensitive as this is a matter we need to be able to put these services in for our Accountability Court because we have families that are in need of the surveillance officer services um now, as soon as possible.
All right. And how, how long does this eighteen, how, how many hours does this eighteen thousand? How many officers and hours and months does this eighteen thousand dollars give?
This will, this will cover us, Commissioner Arrington, through the end of the year.
Awesome.
Accountability Court.
All right. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Let's vote. Commissioner Hausman? Commissioner Ellis? Did you say something, Commissioner Ellis? I saw, I saw you.
Yeah, you got me.
Okay, you voted yes. Okay. Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next item?
Next item on consent agenda, removed by Commissioner Hall on page five. Two zero dash zero five nine nine, Real Estate and Asset Management. Request approval of resolution approving a land lease agreement for the purpose of operating a low-level wind shear alert warning system on site at the Camp Truitt campus.
I have, um, I have a question. Well, more than one, actually. Um, the first one is, I, I couldn't find anything related to the lease agreement to um answer the question of, um, how long is the lease? And how much are they actually paying to lease the land?
Joe Davis, uh, Director of Dream, Commissioner Hall, the lease term is, the land use term is for twenty years. Um, this was first approved by the Board of Commissioners in March of two thousand. So the term of the lease has expired. The FAA and federal government expressed the desire to move forward. Uh, it is a no cost or no revenue land use agreement uh that benefits uh the, I guess, foundation of the agreement was that it benefits the citizens of Fulton County from a safety or public safety perspective.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, colleagues, what's your pleasure? Motion, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Let's vote. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vote yes. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And motion passes, five yay, zero day.
All right. Thank you. Next item.
Page six, two zero dash zero six zero zero, Community Development. Request approval to terminate a contract between Fulton County and the City of Fairburn regarding twenty eighteen CDBG fund.
Okay, I have a couple of questions on this one and some, and my questions are a little bit similar between six hundred and um six oh one. But starting with six hundred, I wanted to know what, what is the contract execution date of the original contract? Because this says we're actually terminating a contract to request approval to amend a separate and current contract. So I'm trying to get an understanding of, so what was the ex- execution date of the original contract?
Uh, good afternoon, Commissioner Hall. This is Pamela Bell. The original contract was approved in January of twenty twenty. Uh, the Fairburn actually has two contracts. One was approved in January of, of twenty twenty and the second was approved in March of twenty twenty.
Okay, so we're, we're terminating two contracts instead of one or?
So, no, ma'am. What, we received a written request from the City of Fairburn to terminate the first contract for a utility relocation. And that contract- and that contract value was one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. We received a written request from the city stating that they found a, other funding to move forward with that project because they could no longer wait on the notice to proceed from HUD. And so they're asking us to redirect the contract from the utility project to a sidewalk improvement project.
Okay, so, um, so the project changed because we got the request from the actual city to change it. That's, I wanna make sure I got that clear.
Yes, ma'am. We received a written note from the city that they wanted to redirect the one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars from the utility project to their sidewalk improvement project. We did get the clarification and guidance from HUD as to how we would move forward with their request. And so we will apply the one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar previous contract or first contract to their sidewalk improvement contract for a total of three hundred and, uh, twenty-four thousand dollars. So, no new money is being requested. We just needed board approval to, uh, support the action that was requested by the City of Fairburn.
Okay, so what's the completion schedule for the new project?
Um, I will work with, uh, Ms. Benjamin, who is assisting the city with project management, and I can get their, uh, schedule to you.
All right, just wondering because trying to make sure we have enough time to do the new project since we're terminating an, an old agreement, getting a new one, and we got money to spend. And I know usually there's some kind of deadline for spending this money, and I'm just glad to see that it seems like a problem that we had in the past that created a lot of commotion. We have figured out how to not have that problem again and just, uh, take the funding and redirect it, and I'm, so I'm glad to see that. Um, so, um, I move approval.
Second.
Let's vote, Commissioner Hausman? Commissioner Ellis? Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
And that motion fails. Three yay, zero name.
Thank you. Next item.
Did you, Tonya?
Um, yes.
You record who you had the three votes from?
Commissioner Arrington, Karnes, and Hall.
I voted yes, too.
I voted yes.
Okay, we didn't hear you all. Sorry about that.
So, that passes, five yay, zero name. Next item. Next item on page six, two zero dash zero six zero one, Community Development, request approval to rescind an award of CDBG funds to the City of College Park and reprogram.
Okay, um, so I have questions on this one. Oh, all right, so I noticed that we're rescinding instead of terminating this time, and we're reprogramming these funds. So, I wanted to know what's the ri- origin of the reprogramming funds that, um, that we're using?
Yeah, so why are we rescinding these funds instead of terminating them? As in the previous item.
Dr. Rochelle, you're muted. We can't hear a word you're saying. There you go.
Okay, um, this is one contract for a Kathleen Mitchell School demolition that the board approved in May of this year. We received a written request from the, uh, City of College Park asking us to re-soak their contract to a splash pad. There, um, they provided that notice to us in writing, and so the, the funding of five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for the contract that was approved in May, that is the funding that will stay in place in the scope of the project where this one contract will change to a splash pad from a demolition.
Okay, I couldn't find what the grant allocation years are in the, in the resolution information that was provided. Can you, can you provide that information? Or, um, I mean, can you respond to that question? What are the grant allocation years?
I believe, uh, this is reprogrammed dollars, and so it's more than, I can confirm it, but I believe it's twenty eighteen as well.
Oh, okay. All right, and so, so was there a selection process to move the, these funds to College Park? Or it was just done through the written request from College Park?
So, the board approved a, uh, slate of reprogrammed dollars. The Department of Community Development did solicit from all of the municipalities, making them aware that there were reprogrammed dollars available. We provided an application and notice to every mayor that is a part of our cooperative agreement that the funding was available, and those funds were approved. But this project, however, the, the city has asked us to change the scope of the project that was previously approved.
Thank you, Dr. Rochelle, and, uh, move approval.
Vice Chairman.
Yeah.
To answer your question, the reason why we use the word rescind versus terminate is that we have not entered into a contract in this instance, but the other one, we actually had a co- a signed contract.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second. All right, let's vote, Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Five yay, zero name. Next item is on page three of the add-on memo, the added item, two zero dash zero six two seven, Registration and Election, Request Approval of a Grant Award for Elections Processing and Voting Equipment.
Motion.
Second.
Let's vote, or is there any discussion? Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
And the motion passes, five yay, zero name.
Colleagues, I believe that's all the business that we have before us today. Madam Clerk, is there anything else?
No further items.
We'll entertain the motion, uh, to conclude the meeting.
Motion.
Second. And I guess we adjourn by consent. All right. But do we need to vote? Madam Attorney, we need to vote on that?
No, as long as the agenda's completed, then no new items, no, no, Vice Chairman, no need to vote.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone.